I'd like to thank you all for coming tonight to the regular meeting of the Trinity County Planning Commission, April 14th, 2022, 6:00 PM. If you'll all join me with a pledge, we'll get started.
I have pledged to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to open the floor up for public comment. During the public comment period, members of the public may address the Planning Commission on any matter not listed on the agenda that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. Please state your name.
Chris Williams, Weaverville. So today I spent several hours going over the information on the Appendix C tracking sheet that the Cannabis Division recently posted on their website. This sheet had not just a few errors, but major misinformation listed, and appendix, like Appendix Cs, that apparently made its way all through the technical review when it was submitted last week. This is a tracking form that should make the lives of farmers, consultants, and county staff less stressful. But instead, it made me sad and a little angry because each one of these Appendix C submissions means something to me as in my work as a consultant. The money people have spent on building that report, the hundreds of hours it took to prepare them, the joy I felt when I got to text each one of my clients that I submitted. To know that very real people are behind each of these Appendix Cs listed means so little that a simple spreadsheet feels like a Jackson Pollock painting should really give us a moment of pause. But perhaps this spreadsheet is a representation of what's happening inside the program, and that should also give us a moment of pause. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there any other comments?
Good evening. My name is Laurel Doomer, and I'm here to represent Dana Ryan and his rezone application. Application number P-2133. Must I mention this is a non-cannabis project? Mr. Ryan's application and initial study were submitted on September 8th, 2021. It has been 218 days since we submitted the application and have yet to receive much form and feedback. I have a spreadsheet that I have provided to you of every attempt I have made to receive an update, if a response was received or not, and also including the response that I've got. The last update I received was on March 14th, 2022, stating the file needed to be reviewed to see if any outside agency comments were received. Since then, no further update on the application was given, and it is unknown to us if there are any outside comments due to the lack of communication from the county. The purpose of the rezone is to change the general plan designation from single-family residential low-density to multifamily high-density, and to change the zoning district from single-family to multiple-family district. Mr. Ryan's plan is to build an apartment building providing our community with up to 90 new homes. This would immensely help the housing shortage that we are currently in. We are at a standstill with no further action being taken by the Planning Department. Mr. Ryan is not alone in this. We have many projects in the same boat as him, and because of this ongoing issue, we had to turn away dozens of land development projects knowing the county would not process the application in a timely manner. Such projects include subdivisions, lot line adjustments, grading projects, and zone changes. I ask the Planning Commission and staff to review this project in earnest so the developer can proceed with the planning of this development. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there any other comments from the floor? Go ahead. State your name.
Hi, I'm Krasimir Yordano. Everybody knows me like Chris from High and Low. I don't know what she was talking about, but I'm here to talk about my subdivision process starting six years ago. And I had promised from everybody to help about that. Rick Tippett, Kim Hunter, Lisa Lozier, or Richard Coon, but never anything happened. My map been approved, I'm sorry about my English, but map been approved in 2018. Oh, Lisa, you're here. I'm glad to see you.
Yes.
Because she's the last person who promised me to have some movement on that. I did everything. I did most of everything. I don't know what I did. Everybody, what they said, I did that. Nothing happened. And six years later, I don't know what to do. And just I need help. You are the bosses. You are the final, final things. I've been waiting week ago for five hours. She didn't have five minutes for me because she promised me a year ago. Kim Hunter promised me two years before her. Rick Tippett, a year before Kim Hunter. I don't know. I don't know what to do. Just help me. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We hear your concerns, sir. State your name, please.
John Brower from Justice City. Good evening, supervisors, or sorry, commissioners. In light of this just overwhelming backlog of planning projects that have had little to no movement and even less communication on, it does seem that you could possibly schedule a meeting that just deals with this subject and to engage with staff and hear their concerns and their ideas. And, you know, perhaps starting with a list of these pending projects would be a good starting place. And then, you know, coming up with a status report for each of those projects pending. But there are so many of these that have gone on for so long that I'm not so sure anybody even knows how many there are or what their status is or whose desk it would be on or who would be accountable to communicate with the applicants at this point is... It's not just current staff. It's been chaotic for a long time. It seems our county departments were really defunded and hollowed out years ago. I wasn't here for that. It was before I started paying attention to these matters. But it is something that affects almost every business in the county. And so Chair, it seems you're in charge of agendas. Perhaps you could agendize a meeting that just dealt with this. And we could deal with things other than cannabis for an evening. It might be refreshing. And, you know, try to make some headway, try to hear the concerns of staff and get the ball rolling on some of these really imperative projects. It's essential to our economy.
Thank you, John. Is there anybody else? Is there anybody on Zoom? Okay, with that, we're going to close. Make a motion. Can I have a motion to close the public comment?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
This is Margaret Long, County Council. You don't need a motion to close public comment. That would be the chair's discretion.
Thanks.
Chair, if I may? Maybe because there's people in the audience that will not be here at the end of this meeting, that will take a while, maybe this could be a good time to address the subdivision review committee and direct, get some feedback and direct staff to form the review committee.
Yeah, I think there's two things we probably need to address. But yeah, I'm actually in favor. I think it would be...
Could you speak into your microphone?
Yeah. I'm actually in agreement with Commissioner McIntosh that there's kind of two-fold things, and it's something that we're hearing loud and clear from everybody, I think, including staff, is number one, we need to reenact the subdivision review committee, and that needs to happen immediately. So I'm going to direct staff that you schedule that for the first, the next opportunity that we can do that, that we can get this room or... And I don't even really know how that works and who's on it. So we need direction on that from either county council or staff and how we get that going again.
Okay, will do.
Okay. Along with that, I think I'm in agreement. There does seem to be a tremendous amount of backlog and not due to any one person, but certainly with the amount of turnover this county's had, who is steering the ship on how to handle that backlog? And what is the plan to address backlog and prioritize issues that are out there pending?
Would you like me to address that?
I would.
Okay. So part of the problem is that you do not have a director for your planning department. So when I started here as deputy director, it was my job to wrangle all those projects, starting with the oldest, working to the newest, which we were making headway on. Some projects, lot line adjustments, older parcel maps, projects that were fixing to expire, they needed to do extensions of time, which some of those have come before you, projects that needed modifications on conditions so their maps didn't expire. Those projects have come before you. So yes, we do have a backlog of projects. That's fact. But given that I'm the only person currently working in the county that has the experience to process the more complicated applications, and I'm also doing the director's job, makes it very difficult for me to get those projects done. So I have been in communication with various ones of these supervisors. They understand my frustration as I have expressed it in no uncertain terms. You know, because basically, it isn't easy for me to get these kind of emails on a regular basis, knowing for a fact that I can't work on these projects because I'm doing employee evaluations, because I'm signing off on invoices, because I'm reviewing things for cannabis projects and other projects and things that are time-sensitive. I will speak to Chris in regard to his parcel map. They turned in a request for a subdivision modification in December. When we started looking at that application, the ownership on that, according to the assessor's office and according to Parcel Quest, has changed. It's very difficult for us to process an application that belongs to a different person that is not listed on the application. I know that staff has reached out via, I think, email and letter to let them know that we need additional, we need an updated application before we can do anything with that. So in some cases, we don't have a whole lot of control over what's going on. So yes, I am sensitive to that. I understand it is a problem. But I am in a very difficult position that I cannot do everything.
Thank you for that, Lisa. We certainly feel your pain and understand where you're coming from. With that being said, can you get back to us via email on how we get the subdivision committee revived?
I could give you a little primer on that. The Trinity County subdivision ordinance lays out very clearly who sits on that commission. So that would be a matter of working with the clerk of the board and seeing who they have currently assigned to work on that commission. And it works significantly like the Planning Commission in that it is a public hearing process, so it needs to be noticed. You know, it's not just like you send out a meet and greet and everybody sits down and makes some decisions. So, you know, it is official committee. So yes, it can be done. It's a matter of working with the library for this room, if it is available, and what times it's available. I know in the past, I think, last time I was looking at minutes for the meeting, the last meeting that we have minutes for was 2012. So it's not been functional for quite some time. I don't think it would be that complicated to get it back on track. But, you know, still, there's some...
In your experience with other counties, do subdivision committees streamline the process that you have to deal with and you're talking about now?
Other counties that I've worked with, they don't have really a subdivision review committee, not a formal process like Trinity County does. What they do is they have agency meetings. So they have specifically the most commonly referred agencies, which is fire, building, Department of Transportation, planning, and if Caltrans is involved, or CalFire. In the case here, we have Weaverville Fire District, so they would be involved in any issues, you know, if anything came up that was in their district. So it would be a standing meeting with invitations to those people and then additional agencies as necessary. You know, if the Forest Service was potentially going to be impacted, they would probably be invited as well. Informal meeting, it doesn't make actually a decision. But what it does do is it provides all of those agencies the opportunity to sit down at the table and talk to each other and identify problems or, you know, maybe something that one person didn't see as a problem, another agency would see it as a problem, and then they can collaborate and figure out a solution at the table.
Do we currently have any such format?
We do not.
So the latter of the two would probably be more beneficial than a formal committee, I suspect.
It would. I think what that would entail, I mean, what you could potentially do is try to reanimate the subdivision review committee because all of the regulations are in place now, and then transition that to something less formal. But that would require some changes to the Trinity County subdivision ordinance.
Understood. Thank you for that. I appreciate your time and your opinions on that.
And it might be worthy of proposing to the Board of Supervisors. I had a very nice conversation with Supervisor Frazier today in regard to streamlining certain processes and things that I thought were wasteful or time-consuming for the public. So it might be interesting to drop some information and say, is there a way that we could do this same type of subdivision review without the formal process?
Lisa, I was wondering what was the status of hiring a planning director to lessen your workload?
I would love to be able to tell you, but I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
Is this something that you can spearhead or do we need to make a formal motion to have this move forward?
I can spearhead that, and I will talk with you after the meeting for details.
Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
All right. Okay, moving on. Item one on the agenda is minutes. Approve the minutes from the meeting from February 24th, 2022. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from February 24th, 2022?
Yes, I move to approve the minutes from February 24th, 2022.
Do I have a second?
All seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Okay, item two on the agenda is tentative parcel map, P-20-40, request to divide a 3.27 acre parcel into two resulting parcels of approximately 2.04 acres and 1.23 acres for residential use. Access to the project site is from Reservoir Road and State Highway 3, approximately 500 feet northeast of the intersection of State Highway 3 and North Street, Weaverville. Assessor's parcel is number 024380034000. Applicant is P. Scribner. Planner is L. Lozier. Staff?
Good evening, Chair Sharp, Commission members. Lisa Lozier, interim Director of Building and Planning. And I will start this discussion off with this project as an excellent example of what should never take too long to do. And basically, this is a very simple two-parcel land division. The property that's being divided was originally created by a map that was approved in the late '90s. So, you know, it has already been reviewed previously, you know, to a certain extent. Some of the parcels developed. Ultimately, this parcel is owned by Paul Scribner, and he is requesting to subdivide into two parcels. The zoning for this particular parcel is rural residential with a one-acre minimum. It's combined with a residential office zoning. So if you kind of take a look at the zoning map, how that parcel's laid out, it makes a little bit more sense on the zoning. It's a little bit unusual. And it also has a mobile home standard overlay. General plan designation is rural residential, so the zoning and general plan are consistent. Project site is 3.27 acres. The parcel A on the parcel map that is, I think, probably the last attachment, attachment five in your packet, it shows the layout of the parcels with parcel A having access to, I always wanted to say Reservoir Road, but it is... Town Reservoir Road, thank you. And then the parcel B has direct access to Highway 3, and there is a condition from Caltrans requesting an encroachment for that parcel when they are ready to develop. Actually, and really for this project, you know, this is the type of project that the state of California is looking to, you know, in the future. Projects like this, the intent is for projects that have access, you know, good access, they have all of the utilities, access to water and sewer, fairly simple. For this project, it is SEQA exempt. It meets certain standards in the SEQA requirements that it has a category exemption, you know, from additional review. These types of projects are the types of projects that the state of California is encouraging people to move forward with in order to help with the housing crisis. So pretty simple overall. It's consistent with the general plan. It's consistent with the Weaverville Community Plan. The zoning makes sense for the area. Very few conditions necessary for this project. And I think with that, basically, the staff... The staff recommendation is... I'm sorry, can we need a drink of water? The staff recommendation is that the Planning Commission would approve this project and that based on the findings of fact that are listed out in the resolution. And what I would like to do at this point is, when I had the conditions put together, I sent those to the applicant and the applicant's representative, and they had requested a couple of changes that they worked with Department of Transportation, and then notified me so I could update the conditions that we had with the attached resolution. And I have brought copies for you so you can take a look. So what I'm going to hand to you is a revised resolution with the copies of the conditions, specifically conditions number seven and number nine. Number seven is a strike through with an additional condition. And I believe that the applicant's representative would like to have a discussion about condition number nine. And I think at this point, that kind of concludes my presentation.
Thank you. We're just going to take a minute and review this real quick. Did you say conditions nine and seven?
I did.
Thank you.
So seven in the revised resolution and attached conditions. What I did is the applicant had provided language that he is in agreement with Department of Transportation. This is a Department of Transportation condition. So I went ahead and did a strike through of what was initially provided for you and added the language that was agreed with the applicant and Department of Transportation underneath that. There was some discussion today in regard to condition nine, and they had some concerns with condition nine. My discussions with Mr. Andrew Pence at Department of Transportation, we wish to keep that condition in and intact. But, you know, I'm always willing for the applicant to make their case.
Mr. Pence, can you speak to condition nine for us before we hear from the applicant?
So... So condition nine is...
Can you state your name for the...
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I'm Andrew Pence from Department of Transportation. And so condition nine is requiring a turnaround, which is a requirement of both subdivision ordinance and the Fire Safety Code, the county Fire Safety Code. There is a current turnaround at the end of Reservoir Road cul-de-sac. It appears to have a 30-foot radius on the turnaround, roughly. It's kind of oblong shaped and not really round. And that would meet the Category D standard. It is a few hundred feet from the new property, but I would consider that close enough personally. The Fire Safety Ordinance, though, requires a 40-foot radius, which is a bit bigger. And so it's one of those things that I think the local fire department would want to go up there and verify. They didn't, I don't think they commented. Is that correct, Lisa?
They provided a no comment.
Okay. So I just want to make sure before we... Having this in here allows us to... It just is more of a notice to anybody who's working on this that it's just something to consider. just something to consider. It may be, the fire department will come up and write us a letter that says it's, it's all good. I would like that for my file when I go to approve it.
Sorry, is that from Cal Fire or from our local?
I believe the local fire department has jurisdiction.
Yes, and that's Weaverville Fire, and that is who I received the no comment comment. Basically, they, they, we sent out a request for comments, and they returned it saying they, they did not have a comment on the project. I did also reach out to Cal Fire and ask them if they would like to provide a review, and their discussion with me, and this was a verbal discussion, not in writing, that since it was under the Weaverville Fire District, that they would not comment.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff or Mr. Pence? Thank you, Mr. Pence. Okay, I think at this time, we'll go ahead and hear from the applicant.
Hello, Gabe Jazlin, the project surveyor. Okay, number nine, turnaround is required on the access road of parcel A. Existing turnaround at the end of Reservoir Road does not meet Trinity County subdivision ordinance standards.
Can you speak closer to the...
I'm just, I'm just reading, reading number nine here. Existing turnaround at the end of Reservoir Road does not meet the Trinity County subdivision ordinance standards. The existing turnaround at the end of Reservoir Road must meet the road improvement standard of county code, section 1648-126, or a new turnaround is being constructed near the western boundary of parcel A to meet the county subdivision standards. So, I'll look it together here. I've got a bunch of bullet points here about this situation. First one, I just wanted to quote section 1616020 of the subdivision ordinance. It says dedications and improvements required in connection with the approval of tentative map shall be limited to the dedication of rapidway easements and the construction of reasonable off-site and onsite improvements for the parcels being created. I would like to emphasize to you the word reasonable in this situation. Then I got another bullet, Trinity County Fire Safety Ordinance, 8.30.030, states in part, this is the first page of your fire safety ordinance, and before they start giving me all the regulations, it says, "These regulations do not apply to the existing structures, roads, streets, and all private lanes or facilities. These regulations shall apply as appropriate to all construction..." Let me read that again. "These regulations do not apply to existing structures, roads, streets, and private lanes or facilities. These regulations shall apply as appropriate to all construction within the county approved after January 1, 1992. Reservoir Road was constructed to the county standards in 1974 as part of the Halaguyer subdivision, thereby exempting from, exempted from the fire safety ordinance per that section of the ordinance." And it's off-site, it's not on the property, it's off-site. So, right there, I don't believe that you need to increase the size of the cul-de-sac to meet the fire safety ordinance because it's exempt. The cul-de-sac is, if you, if you tried to improve it to the south, it, it drops off the hill, and there's people's houses there and driveways, you couldn't improve it to the south. To the north, you have to do a big cut, and you would have to steep, and an already steep driveway there on the north side, and you'd have limited right-of-way area, too. It's just a bad idea. He's saying that you have to, so instead of that, he wants a turnaround, fire safety turnaround by the property line of parcel A. Well, that's, it's, it's a sloping hill that goes down to where the building site is, and that's just a bad spot for a turnaround. Let's see here, Trinity County Fire Safety Ordinance, section 8.30.180, states, "Turnarounds are required on driveways and dead inroads as specified in this article. The minimum turning radius for a turnaround shall be 40 feet from the center line of the road." That's, that's the problem right there. It's 30-feet radius on the existing cul-de-sac instead of 40. If a hammerhead T is used, the top of the T shall be a minimum of 60 feet in length." Nice bullet here. "Driveby turnarounds, driveby turnaround requirements are more particularly described in section 8.30.230B, where it says, 'A turnaround shall be provided at all building sites on driveways over 300 feet in length and shall be within 50 feet of the building.'" It is about 270 feet from the county road right-of-way to the existing building pattern in parcel A. My client does not have any problems building a hammerhead down by the building site where it's leveled, right, rather than up by the property line where it doesn't make any sense. And, and that's what the ordinance says, says to put it by that house, that is the driveway, which it is. So, the improvements on, ah, sorry, the improvements proposed to the existing cul-de-sac are not reasonable per 16.16.020 subdivision ordinance and outside of the fire safety ordinance requirements. The proposed turnaround near the boundary of parcel A is outside of the requirements of the fire safety ordinance and located in an area where such construction will create a large sole disturbance. I was sent an email by the transportation director today stating that he would not sign the funnel map without the driveway meeting the fire safety ordinance, as, as he interpreted it, meaning that he wants a turnaround located in the boundary of parcel A. We are asking that the language of the section nine of conditions of approval be changed to read, turnaround will be required within the 50 feet of the proposed building at the time of building construction as required by the fire safety ordinance."
Thank you for your comments. Is there any question for the applicant from staff or commission?
So, yeah, I just want to make sure I understand correctly. So what you're substituting is that the turnaround would be within 50 feet of the proposed structure at the time of construction?
That's what the fire safety ordinance says for driveways, which is what it is.
Yeah, I mean, I agree, I drive a fire truck, and I'd rather be able to turn around at the structure rather than kind of, you know, halfway there.
The reasoning, as far as I understand, that section nine is in there is that the cul-de-sac on Reservoir Road, the county road doesn't meet the fires, the existing fire safety standards, but it's exempt, right? So he's trying to remedy the fact that it doesn't meet that standard up there for Reservoir Road, the turnaround for Reservoir Road. But I don't think that that's, I don't think, I don't think it's in the code, if you read it right.
Is there any other questions for the applicant? Thank you for your comments. Could I get Mr. Pence back up to the podium, please? I guess the question is, is would you approve a hammerhead at the residence?
I think eventually they'll have to build one there regardless, if they're meeting fire safety code. I, I think that would be acceptable. For me, I would just be, I'm not clear if the fire department would think that was acceptable, or they probably would. One thing that wasn't described is the Reservoir Road has a cul-de-sac at the end, and then it goes farther towards this, towards the parcel, which I said, it's about 300 feet, 200 to 300 feet. But it turns and goes up the hill to the water tank up at the top of the hill. And what I, what this was meaning is that that, where it turns there, if it was graded properly, could actually be that hammerhead turn, and, and so might be able to meet the requirements, too. If you put the, if you put the hammerhead only down at the house, there may not be an adequate room for a car to turn around if, because they, most people could put up a gate across their driveway or something like that, it's not, there's not an easement all the way down there for the fire crews to use, or, so that would, that would be the reason for this. But it does seem like there's an awful lot of turnarounds going on if we do that. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pence. I'm going to bring it back to the planning commission for discussion. Do you guys know what they're talking about? Do you guys understand what they're talking about?
Yes.
Where these turns and hammerheads are?
Very familiar with that particular place, and if you can't turn a truck around there, you shouldn't be driving a truck, it's huge. I drive a truck bigger than most fire trucks, and I'm familiar with that a lot, and if you can't turn around there, you shouldn't be driving.
And you're speaking to Reservoir Road?
Yep.
Okay.
That's good by me.
Is there any public comment? Any public comment on Zoom?
No.
Thank you. Okay, well, I think, the question for the applicant would be, if the fire, would you be okay with it if the fire department doesn't approve it? Do we have a choice? Depends on what we put it down. I mean, my feeling is...
My interpretation of the fire safety ordinance is that Reservoir Road is exempt. Right there, for page one, I quoted the ordinance there for you. So, and that's the only reason for him to turn it, to have a turn, the only reason he wants a turnaround up by Reservoir Road instead of down by the house is because he doesn't think Reservoir Road complies with the fire safety.
No, that's understood.
It's exempt, so.
So I would assume that if what you're saying is correct, that the fire department would probably agree with you and sign off on it.
And they were, you know, how this works is they get a notice showing, they get a copy of the parcel map, and they get a request for any comments, and that's their chance to ask for the things like that. They shouldn't, we're kind of putting the...
They didn't ask for it.
Car in front of the horse by going back to them again.
Yep, thank you.
So, Mr. Chair, so, maybe I'll throw out a substitute condition, which says, "The applicant will construct a turnaround within 50 feet of the proposed structure at the time of construction unless more stringent requirements are imposed by the Weaverville Fire District."
I think that's good.
Isn't that, isn't that inherent, though, in the, in the Weaverville Fire Safety Code? So does, does that need...
Commissioner McIntosh, we can't hear you.
Does, does, does the mandated turnaround or hammerhead need, do, do we need to mandate something that the Fire Safety Council already mandates, or is that, is that needed, is my question?
You mean the part about the, unless something more stringent is imposed by the Weaverville Fire District?
That, that portion would be relevant.
Yeah, I, I agree, that's the same thing. I mean, I, I think basically, like I said, I drive a, a fire truck, but fire trucks keep getting bigger, so that's the only reason I said that.
And, and they're going to, when, when the home is built and the property is developed, they will need to comply with the, whatever stipulations are, are present, whatever code is present with the fire safety at that time. So if it is more stringent, then they will inherently have to apply, or they will inherently have to submit to whatever request the Fire Safety Council mandates, isn't that...
I think that is what's happening right here, so to do the subdivision split, they're getting all those pieces in place so they can build, so those requirements will be set at this point, I believe, that's how it works, is that true, staff?
Yes.
So, I mean, could, could we just strike number nine from it, recognizing that, that the fire state, when they develop, they will, they must meet, I mean, we don't have to stipulate that they must meet it, because that is just inherent code, they must meet the fire safety code. Is it, are we, are we just making sure that they're, that they're following the county, the fire safety code? Maybe I'm confused.
Are we overcomplicating the issue? I think we all talked about, this is exactly the type of program that California and the county want to see coming in, and the turnaround on Reservoir Road has served for the residents up there perfectly, and seems that the petitioner is, is very aware of any constraints, any, anything he needs to do to meet criteria, so I, I think to overcomplicate it or overengineer it is putting unfair burden on that petitioner.
I agree, you're right, I withdraw my suggestion.
Okay, but also, didn't the fire department refuse to make a suggestion or comment?
They just did not have a comment.
Yeah, no comment.
They, they did not provide any conditions, I guess would be the best way to say that.
So in your opinion, when they don't provide any conditions, then they're okay with the project as it is?
That's correct.
So I think we can go ahead, in my opinion, strike number nine completely, and then if we could get a motion to pass this with that exception.
And the amended condition number seven, please.
And the amended condition number seven.
Sorry, I'll recommend that we approve the project with the findings included in resolution PC-20-40 with the conditions of approval, provided that condition number seven is struck and the substitute condition is substituted.
Revised condition seven and striking condition nine.
Thank you.
And that's for resolution PC-2022-04.
22, it says 20-40.
Where are you looking at, Carol?
Staff recommendation?
On page three.
I was reading the staff recommendation.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was looking at the resolution with the resolution number one, I'm sorry.
You're correct.
I was confused.
So, no, so let me try this again. So, I move that the Planning Commission approve the project with the findings included in resolution PC-2022-04. With the revised condition number seven and striking condition number nine in the conditions of approval.
Can I have a second on that?
I'll save it. Oh. I'll save it then.
Do we need a roll call for this?
For resolution, yes.
I have, I have one question before we vote on that, if I...
Go ahead.
So I just want to be clear that resolution PC-20-22-04 is the same as PC-20-40?
So, P-20-40 is the project number...
Okay.
For the file, and the resolution number is PC-2022-04.
Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Could I get a roll call, though?
Commissioner Heaton, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fall, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Barrett, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner McIntosh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Sharp, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you, five zero unanimous.
Thank you for your time, good luck with your project. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the general plan consistency determination for easement agreement underground broadband infrastructure in and around Cooper Barra Stage Junction City. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to staff for an update on this.
Okay, so this, this item was originally agendized in, on the February 24th Planning Commission meeting, it was a special meeting, and then again on the March 10th, 2022 meeting. And on the March 10th meeting, I reported to the commission that I would be reaching out to Mr. Randy Whitehead, who has been working with Department of Transportation to secure an easement for broadband infrastructure and, you know, to run fiber optic cable. So I did have, I'll, I'll back up a little bit. Initially, what we were looking at doing was a general plan consistency determination for the project, for what they wanted to do with Department of Transportation in regard to the easement. So I reached out to Mr. Whitehead and got some initial information from him in regard to the project, and, and we discussed the project, and he asked if I would please review government code, which of course, we do, we do that. So, based on his suggestions and, and discussion, government code, section 65402 discusses the restrictions on acquisition... on acquisition and disposal of real property for public purposes. So that's kind of the key right there is for the need to do a general plan consistency determination is based on whether a public entity is disposing of or acquiring in fee title public, or additional property, whether they're selling it or buying it. In this particular case, for this project, this is for an easement. So it does not include the sale or, or acquisition of additional property. So just to be sure that my review of that part of the code was correct and my determination was correct, I passed this information to County Council Sean Cameron. And he did some review and also some case research to verify that, let's see, case law research did not find anywhere where the definition of dispose was expanded to mean any interest in real property. So based on the preceding information, staff concludes that a general plan consistency determination, and that would be a referral to the board by the planning commission, is not required for an easement agreement for underground infrastructure project. So based on that information, I would respectfully ask the commission to resume, to remove Agenda Item Three as general plan consistency determination is not required for this project.
Thank you. Is there any questions for staff?
Okay, so, and I would like to add, Mr. Whitehead and one of the other gentlemen he works with, Josh Nelson, were listening to our meeting on March 10th. And at that time, there were some public comments, there were some concerns brought forward in regard to the fiber optics undergrounding project. And they have provided a memorandum that addresses those concerns and questions. So that is provided for the commission, it's been posted on the website. So anybody that is interested is, is welcome to check that information. And also, Mr. Josh Nelson is available for questions if there are any additional questions or concerns.
Thank you for that. Is there any public comment? Any public comment on Zoom?
No.
No.
Okay, at this time, we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion.
I mean, it seems like a great opportunity to bring high-speed internet to the end user in the Bay Area and Redding and the Central Valley. Yeah. I'm not sure how much value it's going to bring to our community. I researched in it, it said that, and there's mandates that, that this, this conduit, this, this company will provide internet or access to institutions such as schools, PUD, government institutions, and that will bring service to them. But it also undermines the local internet companies who depend on those larger institutions to be able to have internet to bring into the smaller, the smaller residential areas. And so it will be a hardship for the local internet companies when they do that.
Do we have Josh Nelson on, one of the gentleman, do we have his hand raised? Josh Nelson is one of the gentlemen with that barrel.
Great.
Go ahead and let him comment.
Go ahead, Josh.
Yes, Josh Nelson, can you hear me in the bit?
Yes.
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 We can hear you, Josh, go ahead.
Yeah, very good. I just wanted to address the statement that this would undermine local ISP companies. I think it does the counter to that. It actually, it actually is, if you will, the foundation for broadband along the entirety of the 160-plus miles of bill within ten. We, we are providing simply open access fiber, any and all who leverage that, not just our anchor customers, but others, including any local ISP. So where typically that local internet service provider would have to build every foot of, if you will, their existing footprint, they could leverage some launch. And we are, we are ready and willing and able to provide that access to the foundation, if you will, for, for their network as, as a passive suite.
Yeah, I think, thank you for that. Based on my understanding, and I'm, I'm just, have a basic understanding of this is, it takes a lot of infrastructure to, to as an off-ramp for that, as well as for the last mile. The last mile is the most expensive portion of it, which is connecting it to all the different homes. And what I mentioned is existing internet companies have invested heavily in providing internet to the existing homes. And, and so for them to tap into that is unfeasible based on our population. And so it's, it is a nice carrot for our community to possibly tap into that. But there is not much economic incentive for, local internet companies likely won't be able to afford to provide this to our consumers. So it just, that's just, it's just the way it is. I wish there was a different way where there could provide more value to our community. But it, that's the, we just live in a small community where there is a very low population base dispersed over many miles.
Does any of the other commissioners have comments?
No, I mean, I agree with those concerns. But I guess the question we're being asked is whether or not this is something that needs that consistency determination with the general plan. And, and it doesn't. So, so I'm going to go ahead and move that Agenda Item Three be removed.
Can I have a second on that? I'll say that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Okay, next item on the agenda is Item Four, Resolution Adopting Guidelines for the Establishment of Commercial Cannabis in Opt-Out Areas and Ordinance Amending Title 17 Zoning of the Trinity County Code to Create and Apply a Cannabis Exclusion Overlay District. The purpose of the public hearing is to seek comment from the planning commission to the board of supervisors regarding the proposed adoption of the resolution, establishing guidelines for the creation of commercial cannabis opt-out areas and an ordinance establishing a cannabis exclusion overlay zone district to permanently identify and regulate opt-out areas. This time, I'll take it to staff.
One moment, please, if I may, point of order. I have presented you with a letter from an attorney requesting the recusal.
You're going to have to state your name.
Oh, I'm sorry, Lisa Wright Lewiston. I would like that to be addressed prior to you beginning discussion because that would require her to leave the room. Nothing personal, but there is conflict of interest clearly stated. And Chair Sharp, if you reside in the Weaverville Community Service District, that would apply to you as well. We weren't sure if you resided in that community service.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am.
Thank you.
Ms. Fall, you have any comments on this?
I do. So, you know, I just want to say thank you for your comments. I respect that. I have always been open that I live in an opt-out area. My husband and I own a large parcel. It's got forest service land on two sides, large landowners on the other sides, an independent water source, it's RR10. So when the cannabis cultivation ordinance was first being considered, we were offered a lot of money for our parcel by numerous people. When the ordinance passed, putting us in an opt-out area, the value of my property went down. And so I conversely would argue that the value of the other commission members who don't live in opt-out areas, their property values went up relative to mine. And so I realize that the real estate market is influenced by a lot of different things, whether or not I'm in an opt-out area, whether we all are in opt-out areas, value of timber, because I have a lot of timber, whether or not someone wants to telework. All those things factor into the value of my property, not just whether or not it's in an opt-out area. And so I kind of, I'm not sure about the request to disenfranchise a fifth of the population of the county, which is what I represent, because they're roughly divided. And, and again, I don't think it's a conflict of interest because there's no direct correlation between whether I'm in an opt-out area and the value of my property. So thank you for your-
That's not what the letter says, though?
That's, I am choosing-
Please hold your comments.
Thank you.
Can County Council weigh in, please?
Margaret, is there any opinion of County Council on this matter?
All of us lived in, live in either an opt-out area or a non-opt-out area. So we are all affected by what is decided by this general county ordinance.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Fall. And I think you've answered it adequately, and, and I would agree with your statement wholly. So with that, we'll move on to staff. Can you speak to Item Four, please?
Thank you, Chair. Director Connell, Cannabis Division. Today's project title is the Adoption of Guidelines of Regulations Related to Cannabis, Commercial Cannabis Opt-Out Areas. The introduction, the purpose of this item is to seek a recommendation from the planning commission to the board of supervisors regarding the proposed adoption of a resolution establishing guidelines for the creation of commercial cannabis opt-out areas, which will be Attachment A, and an ordinance establishing a cannabis exclusion overlay zone district to permanently identify and regulate opt-out areas, which will be Attachment B. I'm going to go over the next steps because I have a feeling that that's probably a very important portion of this, this item. So following today's meeting, we are prepared to bring this forward to the board of supervisors on May 3rd for adoption. As noted in your report, the resolution, if approved, would become effective immediately, while the ordinance will take the standard 30 days to be effective, to become effective. And with that, I would love to turn it over to Heidi, who is our consultant, who has been the lead on this project, and she will be presenting to you today.
Welcome, Ms.-
Are you able to hear me all right?
Yes, we are.
Would it be all right for me to proceed?
Yes, it would.
Thank you, this is Heidi Chudin. I'm a consulting land use planner under contract to the county to work on cannabis ordinance items. Thank you for that introduction, Chair Connell. So I'm just going to zero in on the two items before you this evening, starting with the resolution. You may recall that on February 24th and March 10th, your planning commission held a public workshop to receive public input and provide guidance to staff on the cannabis opt-out regulations. And we have taken the information that was the direction that was provided by the planning commission at that workshop and put it into the resolution in the form of guidelines for the establishment of commercial cannabis opt-out areas. So these guidelines would apply going forward for any new opt-out areas or modifications to opt-out areas. You may recognize that the areas of consideration in the guidelines track pretty well with the workshop that was before you. There's a section that presents area-specific considerations. There's a section on the effects of other geographically-based restrictions. There is a section on the treatment of existing licensees in restricted areas. There is a section on prohibited license types, on term limits for geographic prohibitions, on cannabis setback variances, public outreach, and establishment of new or amended opt-out areas. A resolution is, in a way, an expression of the opinion or direction of the board of supervisors. It is going to affect immediately, as Sean mentioned, and it would guide the future, as I said, modifications to opt-out areas, whether that is to modify them as existing areas or create new ones. The second item that's in your package is an ordinance. And that ordinance would do a couple things. It would create a new overlay district called a cannabis exclusion overlay, or CEO. And then it would apply it to all of the existing opt-out areas that are in your code currently and permanently with no change at all. And it would also make the Rush Creek Estates area opt-out and the Lewiston Expansion Area opt-outs permanent. That's a brief overview of what's in these two documents. I'm happy to spend more time and/or answer questions, but I thought in the interest of time and public discussion, I would stop there and check in with your commission whether you want additional detail or if this is a good place to allow you to start to discuss and to receive public comment.
Thank you for that, Ms. Chudin. At this time, yeah, I will bring it back to the commission for questions for staff or Ms. Chudin.
I have a question. So when you say permanent, that's not precluding the ability to amend the existing opt-out areas, correct?
You are correct, thank you for that clarification. What I was referring to when I use the term permanent is that for those two areas that I mentioned, the Rush Creek Estates and the Lewiston Expansion Area, those were adopted using an urgency ordinance format, which has a limited timeframe after which it expires. And for those two, it would move them into the ordinance so they would no longer be facing expiration unless, as you mentioned, a specific action is taken by the county to do so.
If I may?
Go ahead.
Yes, in, in Section Four of Exhibit A, where it is referring to exclusion overlay districts in, let's say, Whiskey Town, Shasta, Trinity National Recreation Area, Ruth, Weaverville Community Service District, Coffee Creek, Trinity Center, Bucktail, Lewiston, et cetera, et cetera. It didn't provide any findings as to the reasons, the sound reasons for these opt-outs being established? And so is that just, is that, was there a reason that those were left out?
There is. It's not that they're left out, sir, it's that those actions have already been taken by the county. Those already exist in your code. And all we're doing in this ordinance is using the overlay as a tool to identify where they are, as opposed to a map or an exhibit to represent them. So it's a more traditional way of using zoning, which is the code in which these ordinances lie, to show where your controls apply and where they don't. So findings were necessary to simply overlay it on an area for which the decision had already been made. I don't know the timing of those decisions, but my understanding is it's been several years ago.
Oh, thank you.
So on that same section, on paragraph one, where it says, "The board of supervisors makes no change to the existing adopted exclusion boundaries or prohibited cannabis uses for each of these areas." So we had talked about potentially adding non-retail storefronts to some of the areas, in particular Coffee Creek. So would we need to change that language and then reflect that change in the ordinance? If we were going to go ahead and start allowing non-storefront retail in the Coffee Creek Volunteer Fire District?
Give me one moment. So there's a good summary of where various cannabis uses are currently prohibited or not prohibited. If you turn a few pages of the ordinance and go to Propose Section 17 dot 12 dot 030.
Right, that's, that's what I was thinking, under a Coffee Creek Volunteer Fire District, you know, if you, if you struck non-retail-
you know, if you struck non-retail, non-storefront from that line to kind of match what the discussion and public comment is, would you need to change also the language in that section one on page three?
So you're correct that you, that would be the place to strike it in order to allow that cannabis use to occur in that area. And let me go back and look at the language. Yeah, we would want to change it because it would no longer be accurate to say that it makes no change to the existing adopted exclusion boundary. So we would want to modify that if that's the direction of your Planning Commission. And if that is a part of your motion this evening, we can make that change and carry that forward to the board.
Yeah, I know it's a fairly, you know, minor, very specific change, but it would reflect, I think, the comment that we were, had received and I thought had agreed on in the public workshops.
Yeah, there's, I mean, this is, this is a big document. There's a lot to unfold in this. But this is, this is really great information because this is the first time that I have seen the findings, the reasons for opt-out zones, as well as which activities are prohibited. And so I'm, I'm having a hard time understanding the findings for the exclusions. And so, for instance, in the Lewiston Expansion Zone, it's just one example, commercial cultivation is prohibited. We've, we've heard that extensively here. But manufacturing is also prohibited. And I didn't see any findings that, that would connect to prohibiting manufacturing. I mean, and there is, there is, there's places where there's non-storefront retail, micro businesses are prohibited. I don't see the findings to justify that. And I just want to make sure that these, the definitions and the findings are clear for us excluding legal, tax-paying, employing businesses from our community.
This was all good. She's just bringing forth what we agreed to.
I could respond on that note, if that would be all right.
Real quick, let me respond. But this is the first time I've actually seen what items are excluded, right? So in the, in the workshop, it was...
It was in a table in the workshop, those tables.
I think I could explain if it would be...
Go ahead, Ms. Chudin, please.
So the list you're looking at, Commissioner, is not as a result of the workshop. The list that you're looking at is what was already in the county code.
Right, for the urgency ordinance, right?
No, sir, actually for all of the cannabis use types.
So, but like, like the Rush Creek Estates, the Lewiston Expansion, those are presently, based on my understanding, under an urgency ordinance?
They, they are.
And the prohibited uses must be in sound land use with solid findings behind it. And now it's being proposed to be solidified in a permanent ordinance. And this is the first time that I've seen the ordinance for the Lewiston cutout and a handful of other places. And, you know, lack of water, steep hill slopes, community character. I just don't see how, how the manufacturing would be, or other, other roles, or not roles, but other business types, why they would be, need to be excluded, why they justified to be excluded.
I have a separate question. On item eight in section A, it refers to the C E, at the, at the bottom of the paragraph, there's a sentence in there that says, "Rezoning to add, amend, or remove the C E O overlay district may be sought by any party with express permission of affected properties or by the county upon hearing by the Planning Commission and approval by the Board of Supervisors." Is, does that mean that the Planning Commission or the Board of Supervisors can arbitrarily make opt-outs or end opt-outs without residential approval of those areas?
The creation of an opt-out area is a land use and planning matter. That's why that these cannabis regulations are lodged in your zoning code. And the responsibility and the authority for making land use decisions for any jurisdiction, excuse me, lies with the elected body, so in your case, the Board of Supervisors. So with this code or with any code in your county ordinances, so any ordinance on any matter, the board can take that up on any given day and direct the staff to look into various changes. That's true for any matter. It's not unusual for interested citizens sometimes to bring forward ideas about ordinances. And I think you have a history of that, as I understand it, with some of the opt-out areas. It's also not unusual for a jurisdiction itself to make a decision that a certain action is appropriate to have staff look at and bring through the proper public hearing process. And so what this paragraph does is simply summarize that to make it clear how a future change to an opt-out area could occur or how a new opt-out area could be put into place.
Thank you for that clarification.
I have one more question. So on, let's see, page three of Exhibit A, it would be item three A, expiration. So it's page three of Exhibit A, so item three.
Okay.
Expiration exceptions. Existing licenses within an opt-out area that are compliant, active, and in good standing shall be allowed to continue to operate at their existing location. So what is, what is the definition for active and in good standing? I looked at the county, the staff memo that essentially defines what is active. And there, I'm wondering if we can put that language in the ordinance to, or in the resolution, to help define what is active? Because at the workshops, we talked about what about licenses that just, they've never followed through? You know, they've kind of fallen by the wayside? And I'm just curious how we define those that aren't active anymore or are not in good standing?
You have a couple of choices. Yes, you could choose to add a definition. You could do that now, or you could have that, you could send a suggestion for that up to the board. So that's one option. There are times in ordinances and regulations where a decision is not made to put a definition into the code, but rather allow it to be more flexible over time. So you could direct, for example, staff to have a working definition that is used for interpreting the code, but not necessarily place that in as part of the ordinance. I haven't looked closely enough at this issue or the definition of active to know which one might be more beneficial for you. So I can advise you on that matter. Perhaps County Council can. But yes, you could certainly direct us to add a definition as a part of your action on this.
So if the county staff right now are using their March 23rd, to that March 3rd, 2022 memo, they could change that memo at any time? And that would change the intent of the ordinance, perhaps?
I don't know enough about that memo to respond to that question. I'm sorry.
Yeah, presently, how many licenses are in good standing?
Steph?
At this point, I can't give you a direct number. I just haven't had time this week to really get my feet on anything.
Or just generally speaking?
Maybe you want to generally speak?
Okay, so it sounds like this good standing, since there are 400 farmers in our community that are possibly not in good standing?
Well, these are grandfathered, these are just grandfathered ones.
Well, these grandfathered ones are in the same situation as all other farmers. So they may or may not be in good standing.
But originally, there were only, what, there were 21 plus six? I have a memo. But, I mean, there were only less than 30 that were originally grandfathered in both the original opt-out areas, Rush Creek, and the Lewiston Expansion. So that's all we're talking about is...
Well, that's right. So of those...
And how many of those remain?
They may or may not be in good standing. And that may or may not be because of the Appendix C with the E I R and the bottleneck that is occurring. And so clarity, maybe like drilling down the definition of good standing would be appropriate.
I would agree. Is there any other comments with Commissioner, gentlemen?
Yeah, I...
Commissioner Barrett?
I, I have some more questions. So again, this is, this is the first time that, you know, Exhibit A and B has come before me. So there's, there's just a lot of questions there. It mentions, and then, and just the foundation of my questions is not to undermine the existing opt-outs, but to see how the findings for the existing opt-outs could be utilized to encourage or to justify opt-outs in the future. And so we want to just make sure that these findings and the information is clear. And I'm not, I'm not certainly, I'm not absolutely clear. For instance, in the, let's see, in the Rush Creek opt-out, it mentions, that's on Appendix B, page one. It mentions impaired water resources. It mentions exacerbated marginal conditions, many roads privately owned, substandard with the base in gravel, water truck, or truck delivery for water resources from outside the area. There's a lot of these things that are, and it also mentioned, oh, in number five, it mentions small parcel sizes and density. And Rush Creek Estates itself, I see that there is, they're small, small dense population. But in the opt-out, that also includes Bear Creek. And I looked at the zone, I looked at the property sizes. There's 150-acre parcel, there's a 90-acre parcel, there's numerous 10-acre parcels. And it is known that Bear Creek is wealthy in water. It has tremendous amount of water. No?
No.
Okay. And then, you know, and so it seems like there, the, the conditions for an opt-outs are not being equally, equally spread. And so if, you know, like, why would, so it seems like it's, the just, the, the findings are for the small parcels, but there are very large parcels. And if there's a very large parcel that has ample setbacks, that has ample water, for instance, in the neighborhood that I live in, on one side of the street, there's 12 properties that have 60 gallons a minute. On the other side of the creek, all the parcels have two gallons a minute. It doesn't matter what farming activities is going on, there's just different water resources. So to cut out a particular area because of water concerns that are mitigated in the, in the E I R, it's, I'm concerned for the future opt-outs, right? That the findings don't correspond with the reality that is on the ground.
I think you're picking one section, though, and not, you know, there's six, seven, there's 10 different things here.
Oh, thank you. I could also talk about the, the Expansion Zone where Grass Valley Creek, that includes agricultural land, that include, they talk, in the findings, it talks about salmonoid habitat where the, the Water Board mandates that there's absolutely no runoff. It's in a community that says that it's, they're concerned about the water while there is a 50-acre winery that's directly sucking out of there. And so I'm just wanting to make sure that as we're making ordinances to expand overlays, that we are using findings that are established in science and not opinions.
Well, but you're kind of focusing on water quality, water quantity. And there are a whole list of things that are, should be considered. So there's unique topography or geography infrastructure, including road conditions, land use considerations, community character, which is usually what's reflected in the petitions, population or density, public input. There's people here saying that they want to be in an opt-out area. So, you know, you have to look at all of those, whether or not it's appropriate to be an opt-out area.
Not just one thing, the other, all those considerations.
But the considerations need to be established in facts.
They are.
Right? And so, and so like, unique characteristics. In, for example, the Grass Valley Creek area, is that place unique in its steep geological characteristics? More unique than any other place in Trinity County? It looks like, it looks like a big, it looks like a big valley of agriculture.
I think with the community characteristics is what makes it unique.
And public input.
And public input.
Okay, so putting public input and putting character, community character is appropriate. But putting findings that are not, that are not in, that are not scientifically valid is something that I think we need to steer away from. So, and community character is, is community character for keeping out businesses? I mean, can, can the community character create a, if Lewiston wants to be a dry town that doesn't allow alcohol? Is that, is that, is that something that is allowed in our community? Is that, Steph? Can we create a dry town in Trinity County?
I think that would ultimately be up to the business owners there. The, this is kind of a hard discussion because ultimately, the approval of a license to sell alcohol comes from the state. Most places, you may have some, you know, on land use issues. There, how many restaurants do we know that, that sell alcohol? So, you know, if, I suppose you could potentially do it?
Yeah.
I mean, you know, it, I, I, I'm not sure, you know, you're asking me to kind of compare things that, that are not necessarily equal.
My apologies. Yeah, thank you for that. And so I just, with these findings for, for these cutouts, this has cut out 5,700 parcels in our county. And out of the 5,700 parcels, we only have 12,319 private parcels. 844 of those are, are T P Z that are already cut out. So now we are cutting, so out of the 11,483 parcels in the county, we are, right now, without expanding the opt-outs, already cutting out 5,700. That's just about 50% of the, of the parcels in our county.
Steph, could you remind us how many licenses the county has approved to, to actually permit?
530.
So I think that's a pretty adequate amount of open parcels for 530 licenses that we're actually going to approve.
And I'm concerned, so the, the original opt-out areas were incorporated into the ordinance after months of public input. We all remember being at the Performing Arts Center with hundreds of people, saying whether or not they wanted to be in an opt-out area. And so I think that is pretty striking in terms of people trying to define the community character, what's important to them economically. So I don't want to go backwards and take those areas out. And I think that the consultant has done an excellent job of applying the criteria that we gave her to the proposed additional opt-out areas.
Yes, and I hear what you're saying. And again, I'll emphasize, this is the first time that the actual findings, I, I had an opportunity to see what the findings are. And so I am concerned that these, these same findings will be applied to future opt-outs. For instance, if there was an opt-out proposed on Oregon Mountain, and they said that... For instance, if there was an opt-out proposed on Oregon Mountain, and they said that they're, you know, it's community character, there's not enough water, there are particular places that don't have enough water. There are other places, my property, I have forty gallons a minute, but my next door neighbor has a spring and it's running low. So should I not be able to have a cannabis farm, or a hog farm, or an almond farm, because I have water, but my neighbor does not?
Who's to say the spring is running low because of the cannabis?
Well, that, I think, that's, so that's a good question. So like, it says that these water considerations, but was there any hydrological tests done? And they're very easy hydrological tests. You take a sample of the cannabis farm, you take a sample of the neighbor, if it's the same pH, if it's the same mineral level, if it has, it's the same, it's from the same source. And so I'm concerned that we have already cut out half of the parcels from ability to participate in, in tax...
Do you already have five hundred and thirty licenses? That's an exaggeration.
No, no, we are, we have, we're cutting out half of the parcels from being able to move to an area and choose. It's, it's been concentrated. And so the majority of our land is federal land. So now that brings half, half of the, pardon me, let me get my mind straight, half of the, now, half of the parcels are off the table. So anybody who wants to have a farm will have to be in the remaining half of the county, which puts a concentration of farms in half of the county.
Well, no, actually, there are ten opt-out areas proposed. Nine out of those ten are in District One. All are part of Weaverville and Weaverville Historic District. But, so you've got four districts in the county, and the only opt-out area in those other four districts is the Ruth Lake lease lots. So I, the only way to resolve your issue is to essentially go back and rewrite the ordinance and take opt-out areas out. And that would be wrong, because that's not what this was about.
No, I, I, I don't agree. I think we need to just, we can add more specific definitions and characteristics to make sure that the, the proposed opt-out zones in the future are established in science.
But we went through all those in the workshop, and that's why they're listed in, in Item One under Exhibit A. And I don't want to keep repeating them, but I mean, it's not just water quality, it's topography, geography, infrastructure, so something like Rush Creek, the concern is that that is a skinny private road, Bear Creek Road, land use considerations, again, community character, economic considerations, population or density, public input. So all of those are what we identified as things that could be, should be considered and, and used to justify a land use decision.
And so...
I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold it there, because we're not, we're just kind of running around the same tree here. We, we did beat this up hard with two workshops, we hired a consultant, this is what we came up with. You know, I think that the county has done their best, we, I hope, did our best. At this point, I'm going to go ahead and close this part of this discussion and open it up to public comment. Do I have anybody on the floor that would like to comment?
Chris Williams, Weaverville. So a few meetings ago, I think it was about opt-outs, Commissioner Heaton said something that has really stuck with me. Is our commercial cannabis program just? So what is just? And the definition I choose to use tonight is having a foundation in fact or reason. And as planning commissioners, your job is to be just, to use facts or reason as the foundations to your arguments, not to be blinded by one's ego or opinion disguised as fact. That is just. In consideration of adopting these guidelines, I ask that you don't forget, as you guys just discussed, to address the grounds as to what led us here tonight. Show me the evidence conducted by a qualified professional, and not just some neighbor with an email address, that cannabis farms are having a negative impact on the land. You came up with some great guidelines. I love the guidelines, but what are they founded upon? If water is listed as an area-specific consideration, then I want to see some sort of an analysis by a qualified professional that states that a ten thousand square foot cannabis farm, and not the, and not the impact of a winery or a private residence, is what is negatively impacting a watershed. Until you take a hard look as to why this opt-out ordinance is even being written, or have these guidelines, and then also establish a sound methodology to look at area-specific considerations, then I request that you do not accept and move forward with this. What's the point? You're simply allowing NIMBYism to dictate our time here. Is this ordinance just? I ask you once again to not forget about applying these guidelines with evidentiary support to the current opt-out areas. And that should be something that, a consideration is given to the board of supervisors. So once again, show me the evidence that cannabis, that commercial cannabis is having a negative impact on land. You have to tie all of this to land use, not just somebody's upset. And I get it, people are upset, I get upset. Okay, well, my upsetness needs to be, that's not a real word, needs to be founded on something, a fact. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there any other comments from the floor?
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of Commissioner Tom Malenko, Douglas City. You know, I, I have to echo what Commissioner McIntosh was inquiring about. I think it's a very fair inquiry. We all know what the overriding concern here is, what is considered community characteristics. It can also be said, not in my backyard. What we're trying to do, obviously, is come up with reasons why we don't say that this is what it is. And what it is, is that certain people don't want cannabis in their neighborhoods, it's not really land use. Looking specifically at the Lewiston Expansion area, as it's called, you have huge agricultural parcels on one section. I get one section are small parcels of RR. That, I think, can be handled through zoning, those should be R. If people want to be residential, it should be residential, and then the car got is taken care of. There are forty acre ag parcels, there's ag forests there, there is an agricultural operation that has ten acres of grapes. I like grapes, I grow grapes, I make wine, I'm not against it. But they can, they can and do pull almost eight acre feet of water annually. That's three million gallons, more or less. That's more than at least ten cannabis operations. And they pull during a time when cannabis operations have to forbear. They're allowed to cultivate right up to the edge of Grass Valley Creek. Again, I don't, I'm not saying that shouldn't be allowed. What I'm saying, if you're, if we're looking at agricultural impacts, that is an agricultural impact. So it's not agriculture, it's not actually water use, it is cannabis. And so, as we come into other things, oh, well, light leakage is going to bother us, noise, odor, these are all things that our programmatic EIR said result after in mitigation measures in no significant impact. So we have to be very delicate with the kind of findings you're making here, that they don't counteract what we, findings we made a year ago that said there are no significant impacts from these things. And I, I know there is pressure coming here, and people are concerned, but I believe the right way to handle this is through the general plan update. We waited forever for that, it is happening. The cannabis market, as I think everyone is aware of, is, is in a free fall. There is absolutely no one coming to Trinity County in 2022 to start a new cannabis operation where one does not exist already, that you'd be foolish to start on raw land or buy some land. There are, there's probably a hundred farms for sale now. So let's avail ourselves of that breathing room and wait for the general plan. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there any other comments from the floor?
Sally Barrow, Bear Creek Road, Rush Creek opt-out is my deal. First of all, I'm going to say, there's no water on Bear Creek Road. The large parcel that you mentioned is SP land. So let's get it straight. I think that sometimes it sounds like the cannabis community wants to be able to grow commercial cannabis anywhere without restriction. I want to thank you for the work that's been done so far to establish these opt-outs where there can be an area that does not have commercial cannabis, where it doesn't exist. So that, in our situation, I can call the real estate agents when I see a parcel for sale on my road, and say, just to remind you, it's an opt-out area, please don't market, this is a cannabis property. Thanks. So that the cannabis, so that they're not being misled into thinking that there's somebody going to get a permit, because they're not going to. And then people like my family, who doesn't want to live next door to an industrial cannabis site, can live there. Mitigation, you know, for the smell and all that stuff, can there be a place without cannabis? Can there be a place in Trinity County without commercial cannabis? Is that possible? I hope that's not what, you know, I hope that that, we're not in danger of losing that tonight. We recognize, also, we've heard this before, that the opt-out doesn't do anything about illegal growth, and everyone will say, oh, it's the illegal growth that caused the problem. But we've had people in the program, legal program, that have caused us many problems on my road. But we recognize that there's a difference between the legal and illegal growth. We're working on the illegal ones too, right now, while, while we're also working on this. That's another problem that we're working on separately, with quite a bit of success, I might say, to protect our neighborhood. Why can't I live in the place that I bought? Why do, just because someone wants to grow cannabis, they get to come in and change my whole life? Why? I, I don't see why that's, and maybe that's not science. You can look at the reasons on our road why we don't have it, the road is inadequate, there is no water, there's, you know, a million reasons why. But I think that the community opinion, that we want to live our life the way we want to live our life, I mean, don't take it so personally, go somewhere else where you're welcome. And like Bill said, five hundred and some grows, you don't need half the parcels in Trinity County in order to just do the five hundred. You know, could we please just have it? And let us be done with this, we've been waiting for years and years and years. Someone said, why didn't you do a zoning thing? It wasn't available to us. This is the process. We've been going at it for years, it's been in front of you for two years, and we did it almost a year before that. Please, please, please. Thanks a lot, thanks for listening to me.
Thank you for your comments. Is there any comments from the floor? Is there?
Rhoda Kane, Trinity Center. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner. I'm just going to dive right in. On page four of the staff report, under project analysis, it states that one of the economic goals of consistent with the general plan being to maintain as many privately owned prime agricultural lands as possible, which I think is why we're all here tonight, fighting for our right to maintain our privately owned agricultural land-based businesses. I also feel it's important to remember that the Coffee Creek opt-out zone has no basis in land use, so to create a sunset clause or ignore the grandfather clause would also have no basis in land use. Also, this opt-out zone in particular, there was not extensive public outreach, there was one supervisors meeting, it was squeezed into the agenda, but that's fair-ish, I suppose. On page eight, Exhibit A, number two, effects of other geographically based restrictions, it states that too many restricted areas in proximity to one another could create inequitable burdens on other regions in the county. This is also consistent with the findings of the EIR. However, it's starting to look like the entire north end of the county is being turned into one massive opt-out zone. In Exhibit A, number three, treatment of existing licenses, it states, expansion of cultivation footprint shall not be allowed. We ask for equal rights for all permit holders in Trinity County. None of us were finished building our farms when the county signed the settlement with TAA, but we were all required to quit building and wait. We must be allowed to finish. Please honor the grandfather clause and treat us equally. The staff report continually states that it's not making any changes to the ordinance, and active permit has never been a requirement for getting a permit. This is a pretty big change that's being applied only to grandfathered properties. And finally, number eight, establishment of new or amended opt-out areas states, you must have the express permission of all affected properties in the area. If an opt-out requires permission of one hundred percent, or if, if an opt-in requires the permission of one hundred percent of the property owners affected, then opt-out should require the same, if it is to be equitable and not favor one interest group to the detriment of the other. Also, public noticing and outreach should be at least as robust for creating an opt-out as it is for receiving a heavily inspected, highly regulated license to produce a legal product. And, I bow a little more, but I'm out of time. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello, Commissioner, thank you for your time. Matthew Jefferson, Coffee Creek. You already answered a lot of my questions. This report entirely and completely fails to mention the grandfather clause anywhere at all, that states in many places that you're not changing anything in the current ordinance. Not, not including the grandfather clause is a huge change. Specifically, Attachment B, number four, is using the wording from the current ordinance minus the grandfather clause. The current ordinance states, in order to qualify for a cultivation permit in an opt-out zone or to be in good standing, you needed a WDID by a certain date that has been kept active to be grandfathered. An active permit was never required to qualify. Please recognize the grandfather's legacy, farmers, and don't change the rules now. In reference to Exhibit A, Attachment B in the overlay zones, I respectfully ask parcel zero zero seven six seven zero one three in Coffee Creek, and parcel zero zero seven two two zero seven five in Trinity Center be removed from the overlay zone. I've had Water Board Discharge ID on this since mid-2016, their grandfathered properties. I ask that they be removed. And then on chat, on page seventeen, prohibiting other things, micro-business, that lets us package, transport, and distribute, and Coffee Creek is what I'm asking for. With the price of cannabis going down every day, this may be one of the only ways that our small farmers can survive. It's one of the only ways we can cut out the middleman. It gives me the ability to jar and go right to a storefront that can make it so I can make money and survive. So five of the letters in there are from my neighbors on Rancheria Creek of the new parcel that I bought. They talk about all the problems that they've had. They very obviously had very bad actors from the unregulated market. I had no part in it, and I will say I sincerely apologize for everything that they experienced, but like, if we just ban this, we're never going to move forward. Like, I did this in East Fork with a retired sheriff of board of supervisors, the county nurse for the schools, like, nobody involved in cannabis, they all support me. Like, I need a chance, like, you just have to give us a chance. If I can just get one opportunity to meet these neighbors, I know we're going to be friends. Three quarters of my farm is food, you know? But like, not allowing us to continue to grow our farm, not honoring the grandfather clause, you know, it doesn't, it won't let us go forward, and we're never going to be able to bridge these gaps, you know? This is, they're worried about problems with unregulated cannabis. We have to, just give us a chance, you know? And all these farms in these opt-out zones are really good people, and they all deserve the right to continue operating. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else in the room that would like to comment?
Lisa Wright, Lewiston, Chair, Commissioners, thank you. There's an overwhelming amount of information that was presented that was never discussed at public workshop. I'm finding all of this input that didn't come from the public, I don't know where some of it came from. We were only given three days to review because it just became available, and there's really no data that substantiates any of these changes. I concur with Commissioner McIntosh, and I wish you would have been allowed to speak more, because I think there's a lot there. There's not enough established fact to move forward in this manner. So I really think that you should vote this down, or at a minimum, vote to continue it. I think the point on the removal of almost half of potential parcels from...
I think the point on the removal of almost half of potential parcels from the program also ties back to our EIR. I don't believe this can be a CEQA-exempt activity when you're actually contributing to the cumulative impact by now concentrating it into half of the, half of the parcels that might be available. One of the things I think this really lacks as well, and we're taking these broad swaths, there's not really an analysis presented in any of this. There's a list of parcel numbers and there's some maps, but what, and you had some good information, thank you for sharing that, but I would like to know specifically how many egg parcels are being taken out of agricultural use with no basis in fact. That information hasn't been presented. We need more information to substantiate doing this kind of dramatic, dramatic change. There's no uniqueness for these areas that's established in fact. I live in Lewiston. I don't think the community character is reflected in these carve-outs at all. And the community plan that was done in correlation with the general plan, the whole grassland area wasn't even part of it. It's not even considered part of the Lewiston community. So now to try to tie this back to the general plan somehow, it's not consistent at all. We're trying to make it consistent by saying that the consistency is around economic and environmental factors. That's why we need to protect these areas. It's the opposite. We protect these areas environmentally through the PEIR. We contribute to the economy. There's no new industry before us. What other new industry do you see trying to operate here? It's difficult right now to even make money in this industry, but there's nobody climbing at our door to come in. It's just really not the right time. We've executed and started a contract for the general plan update. There will be community meetings. What's the urgency? What's the hurry to do all of this without good, sound science and facts? Right now, there's no available license applications. Why are we hurrying and pushing this through without really thoughtful consideration and actually evidence being presented? I urge you to vote no. At a minimum, if you're not willing to do that, please continue this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there any other comments?
Evening, Chair, Commissioners. Before I start, before the clock starts, a question of, is this going to be broken into separate votes for the guidance regarding establishment of opt-out zones and then the creation of a new zoning ordinance and then the actual establishment of the opt-out zones? This is, because there's several separate land use matters that are all wrapped into this single staff report, single agenda item, single public notice.
I would keep talking, John. Your time's going to...
Yeah, go ahead, John.
We don't have the answer yet.
Well, it's an important question, and the, I think the prior workshop, especially the second night, was not very workshop-y. I think you guys blasted through items A through G, forcing the public to fit up to only three minutes to comment on all of those deep topics. I think this is going to be very messy down the road if you rush this tonight. I also encourage to continue it before, at least some of these items, before making decision on them. And the staff recommendations on page four of the staff report, number one, find that adoption of the proposed resolution and ordinance falls within the scope of the cannabis program EIR certified by the Board of Supervisors on December 2020. No, this was not studied. Expansion of opt-out zones and eliminating 50% of available parcels in the county was never studied in the EIR, the programmatic EIR. It was not. I recommend diving further into that before making anything like that resolution. Number three, the ordinance of the Board of Supervisors, the county of Trinity, amending the zoning code to create and apply cannabis-exclusion overlay zone district. It was never noticed publicly that you're creating a new zoning district or a zoning district overlay, only that you were developing guidelines to establish opt-out zones. This was never noticed properly. This is very messy. This is awful. These are big bites that are hard to digest in one night. And number four, direct staff to file a CEQA notice of exemption within five days of adoption by the Board of Supervisors. This is not, you're going to need to decide, is this a notice of exemption from CEQA or does this fit under the programmatic EIR? It's not both. And there's tons of other items, other matters to comment on in here that I think require more than three minutes apiece, and there is some time. The existing opt-out zone urgency ordinance doesn't expire until July. Another one doesn't expire for a whole year. It gets renewed by the SOUPs. There is a little bit of time to sort through this organized matter and make sure we're really on solid land use ground here, and, or I think county could find themselves in trouble again. I'm not against the concept of opt-out zones, only that they be established in a fair way.
Thank you very much, Chair. Do we have any comments?
Adrian Hughes, P4. Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. I think after this, all this conversation tonight, it really has become apparent that this item probably needs to be tabled because another piece inside of the recommendations, especially, well, considering specifically like the other ancillary license types, is that each one of the opt-out ordinances for each one of the regions will be considered individually. So those would require the development of findings for each one of those individual zones, each one of those proposed opt-outs or existing opt-outs in order to move them, whether they're existing or not, to move them into a cannabis overlay zone is different than where, that's a different land use tool than the opt-out tool that has been used previously. So we would need to have findings for manufacturing, for self-distribution, for retail-only delivery established, and those would, I don't see any of those falling under any of the prescriptions in the recommendations other than the community character type elements. If the roads in some of these neighborhoods are in such poor condition that a, that a delivery-only retail business couldn't function there, do people by chance do home-based Etsy businesses there and have FedEx coming once a week to drop off and pick up materials? My father-in-law is a craftsman. He makes doors, screen doors, beautiful ones. He gets deliveries of wood. He's in Oregon, so his zone's a little different, but it's residential agriculture. It's basically the same use type as our, our here. He gets deliveries of wood materials from a mill. He loads, he creates these projects, makes these doors, puts them into his work van, drives out to sites to install them. Would a business like that be acceptable in an opt-out zone? You know, is, is the character of a community based, is that an aesthetic character? Is that economic character? You know, is it, is it just prejudice? It's becoming a little bit difficult to tell where that line would be drawn. I have a number of other things. Clearly not enough time to get through them. One I'll throw out there in the next 30 seconds. Is proppety stacking? Well, we've already determined in an opt-out, you're not going to be able to expand or square footage, but you could actually, if you do an outdoor cultivation site there, you can split that in half and turn that 50% of it into a light deprivation, which isn't going to increase the intensity of the operation. There's no light in the canopy by our ordinance. That would allow a cultivator to turn an early crop and get out of the ground, and if their water resources don't support a replant, then they can voluntarily not replant. That would actually reduce impacts in an opt-out area. That would reduce water impacts. So that's all I've got for time. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comments from the floor?
You know, I don't like, my name, my name's Chris, and I'm up in Bear Creek, and it really takes a lot of gumption for me to, or courage to come up and talk because I don't, I don't even like people, you know? And to come up and talk to you guys, you know, every week for two years is really kind of, you know, grating on me. And just to dovetail on what Sally said, we, we don't have any water up Bear Creek. I mean, Commissioner McIntosh, I don't know where you get your information, but there were 50% of the people up there ran out of water last year, and they had to beg and borrow from, from their neighbors. Like Sally said, you know, there has to be a place for us to be able to live and not have to worry about people coming in from the outside adversely affecting our environment, the Feng Shui of our, of our community. You know, like, like Mr. Eaton said, he said, you know, he says, "He just wants what's just." Well, we just want to be able to live without having to look over our shoulder. And I'm, I'm not saying that all of the people who are here behind me who are growers, I don't want to say that, that we can't trust them because they're probably the more trustworthy group of, of the business, but we have to, we can't, those of us on Bear Creek in the opt-outs, we can't say, "Well, you're okay," and you're not okay. We just don't want any of it. I took a delivery the other day from somebody who's a grower. He didn't deliver weed. He delivered some stuff he was selling. And he came out to my place, and he was looking at, just at the kind of dovetailing into what Commissioner Fall said about her parcel. He said that, you know, after he unloaded off his trailer, he was standing around, we're talking about stuff, and he walked out to my driveway and he said, you know, "Is that field yours?" And I said, and I said, "Well, how far can you see?" And he said, "Well, I see down to that pine tree." I said, "Well, no, it goes down, down past those ponds, down to the, to the tree line down there." And, and I said, "You want to buy it?" I Googled this guy's parcel. I don't want to, you know, give it away, but I was impressed. And, and so he said, "I can't afford it." And so I'm giving up probably $250,000, $500,000 to live in an opt-out area where this grower who has, you know, impressed me, couldn't afford my place. So I'm just pretty passionate about living in an opt-out area just because I like peace and quiet.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Is there any comments from the floor?
Hey, guys. Getting used to seeing me, maybe? I am not a grower. I'm just a community member. I live in Weaverville.
State your name.
My name is Amber. Do I, do you need a last name too? Just my first? Okay. So I, I'm here because land use, being a private property owner, concerns me, and starting to make ordinances against people's rights to use their land can be a slippery slope. So I guess I want to make sure that, one, any agricultural land that's already there in place doesn't fall under this opt-out zone because then you're starting to tell people they can't have agriculture on their land when it's an agriculture-styled land. I may be speaking out. This is kind of a new concept for me. So I'd also encourage you to consider businesses or farms that have been there existing because starting to, you know, hurt businesses that have already been in place is not the answer. I would encourage you to really consider this issue a little more and get even some more public input. I feel like I wasn't able to make the workshop and would love another opportunity to learn more and share more. So thank you for your guys' time, and I hope you take into consideration what everybody is saying here tonight. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Is there any other comments from the floor? Any comments on Zoom?
LM. Good evening. Liz McIntosh, Junction City. Your staff report states that the resolution and ordinance are consistent with the general plan and meets our economic goals of maintaining and enhancing a viable economic base for Trinity County by maintaining as many privately owned prime timber, agricultural, mineral and sport, and commercial fishery, and animal-producing lands as possible, as well as encouraging a variety of heavy resource-related and service commercial development to remain in or move to Trinity County, thus reducing the individual tax burden. I'm totally lost on this. Cannabis is an agricultural crop and product, so how does creating ban zones that exclude massive amounts of our privately owned parcels, many of which contain agriculture as a primary use, serve these goals? The various license types for the cannabis industry check all these boxes promoting economic viability, so how does excluding businesses that need these definitions align with our general plan's economic goals? I'd also argue that adopting these opt-outs as written is in opposition to another economic goal listed in our general plan, which is to encourage tourism. Cannabis tourism is real, and we are missing it and driving people elsewhere. We don't have control over the heat, the snowpack, or the wildfires. We don't even have full control over our lake, or should I say reservoir. But we do have control over how we regulate this industry, and as the poorest county in the state, we should be doing everything in our power to incentivize, attract business and families here. I, too, question the legitimacy and basis of many of the findings provided. Over and over again, I see findings based on impacts of illegal operations and not on legal ones and things that are addressed in our EIR and other ordinances. There's language about impacts to the roads from trucking water, but the cultivation ordinance stipulates that all water is to be sourced on-site and only allows trucking under a narrow definition in an emergency situation, not on an ongoing basis. And in the spirit of fairness, I got to wonder, do these same roads prohibit logging trucks? There are findings about steep slopes, but isn't that why we have a grading ordinance or in our case, a moratorium? Another finding states, quote, "The area experiences illegal pumping from unauthorized water sources," end quote. I don't understand why we are including language about actions from the illegal industry in an effort to create a ban on the legal industry. I've noticed many, perhaps most, of your letters from the public that I hear are falling under support, supporting community character. Support the opt-out zones based on impacts from illegal players. I don't see how that has any place in this discussion. We continue to regulate and punish the legal players of this industry based on the exploits of the black market. It's just wrong. It's not fair, and honestly, I find it discriminatory. Please don't pass this amendment. Come back with findings firmly planted in evidence, not opinion or prohibitionist attitudes. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there any one else on Zoom?
Nancy Anderson.
Yes, hi. Thank you. I, I tend to agree that I, but I've said this before, that I believe the general plan should be our primary focus. It should be done thoughtfully, circumspectly, fairly, all the things that everybody on both sides is asking for. But I know that there are some deadlines coming up for certain opt-out decisions that need to be made. I stood in favor of last week's same meeting at the same time and said, "I, I don't stand in the way of commercial, of storefronts in marijuana sales, but it should be done circumspectly and wisely and not rushed into." And I think human nature is making it strange because last week, everybody on cannabis side was saying exactly what the other is saying now, that we needed to be postponed longer. So I think we need to take a step back from our human nature and just focus on what is good law, what is good governance, what is wise, and what is good for all. So please be thoughtful. Please be as fair and as wise as you can in making this decision, but let's not take steps backwards from where we've come. I, I just don't see the comparisons between cannabis as agriculture as compared to every other kind of agriculture. It's not the only kind of agriculture that may exist in a 10-acre parcel. I don't see the comparisons that are being made because there are not 500 wineries trying to move into town. There are not, you know, 500 different other agricultural organizations trying to get into town. It's, it's a unique industry, and I am trying to understand it, and I'm trying to be fair, but I, I see comparisons made that just confuse the issue. Please, I don't envy your position to have to decide this, but please be fair and please be just. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else on Zoom?
Daniel Cucci?
Thank you. My name is Daniel Cucci. I'm with the law firm of Abbott and Kenderman, represent property owners in Trinity County. I think folks have said a lot of things. I think one big picture question I would, you know, pose to the commission is, there is time. There are already existing urgency ordinances, the others already exist. You know, a few, you know, a few extra weeks is, I think, not too much to ask to make sure that. I've only had very little time and I've already found several problems with this approach and it doesn't mean it can't be fixed. And some of them, you know, I have, you know, folks who I know, if these were fixed, they may even not, you know, have any concerns over them. So for instance, the area of Exhibit A, it's page three, on treatment of existing licensees in restricted areas, A, B, and C are very problematic. A, for instance, talks about compliance active and in good standing. I'm not sure that you could actually say that about pretty much any license in the county right now because everybody's been stuck not getting any process. So there's probably a whole host of questions about whether anybody would meet this definition. And I understand there's apparently some letter, but I've been scouring the website. I can't find it so far. And usually those kinds of things are on the front page of the cannabis program, but there's nothing there. So I, you know, how would anybody know whether they would fall within that category? On expansion and modification, they use new phrases and terms that don't, aren't consistent with the current cannabis cultivation ordinance. I think those need to be redrafted to try to employ those other terms so it's clear about what is going to be looked at to determine whether expansion is or is not allowed or whether a modification is or is not allowed. I think folks deserve that. I agree that the findings require substantial evidence. You can't just adopt a finding without it. And there's a whole host of reasons why this is a problem. The EIR itself, you know, has performance measures that say you can't get a license if you have no ways odor or lighting from a cannabis cultivation or manufacturing facility is likely to exceed acceptable levels. So you can't get a license and do that, but yet we're saying that's going to happen, so therefore you got opt-out. One last thing, this is so little time and it's just, you know, you can't believe how it feels for folks who are trying to represent others. But I would tell you the section for the findings for the exclusion overlay district that is used, there are several areas that would be imposed a new condition against those properties. And this is just when I've looked at one of the old ordinances. So that section would actually modify the current opt-out ordinance.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Is there anyone else on Zoom?
Brian Tarbell?
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners, Ryan Tarbell, Aforc. I completely agree with the last speaker that the definition that's used for existing licensees in the overlay exclusion zones doesn't include anyone right now compliant, active, and in good standing. Only if you have an approved CUP right now would you meet that definition. So everyone that's in those opt-out zones should be really scared right now and please, you know, what was done in the, in the old opt-out language was using compliance with water board discharge waiver. So I would recommend not to move the goalposts and just go back to that language. There's people that have those active water board permits that are grandfathered in, that are still waiting for develop, to do development. So you really shouldn't exclude those people and don't move the goalposts on them. I also agree that you need to strike findings that cite illegal activities such as illegal pumping of water. I don't really understand how that's relevant at all to these opt-out areas. And also you need to strike findings that cite impacts for licensed cannabis farms that aren't allowed in the ordinance, such as water trucks on the roadways and lit up greenhouses at night. Those issues are a cannabis, you know, enforcement, code enforcement issue and need to be dealt with in that manner and not through these opt-out areas. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else on Zoom?
Good evening, Commissioners, Chair of the Commission. This is Carla Avila from Hyam Palm and Executive Director of the Trinity County Agriculture Alliance. We are the Licensed Trade Association of the Cannabis Industry in Trinity County dedicated to operating responsibly in an ethical manner that promotes sustainable practices and care for our watershed and our communities. And we have well over 100 members, we have hundreds of members, and many of them would be impacted by this. These findings could be applied nearly anywhere and to nearly any activity, especially agriculture of all kinds, small home occupations, light industrial and commercial activities that are presumably allowed in a lot of the zonings in these proposed cannabis exclusion overlays. I think this is setting a really dangerous precedent that these findings, are we removing ag from these overlays altogether? These findings suggest that we should. And otherwise, I don't see the parity here, the fairness, in identifying one cultural or agricultural crop that is known to actually have significantly more efficient water usage, uses less water per square foot than most commercial agricultural crops. There is evidence at the state, lots of data to support this. And there are things like why are non-storefront retail, manufacturing, and microbusiness activities that don't actually have substantial land use impacts or even would be noticeable to neighbors be included in an over broad sweeping overlay like this, over all kinds of parcels, all different zonings all together lumped into one? It just seems really dangerous to me. I agree with all of the previous commenters that have expressed the extreme dire need to really revisit this carefully. I do not think this is ready to go. I don't see how we can apply these conditions to one item when the findings are what they are because this is clearly a prejudice issue here that we are trying to fit into land use and it doesn't make sense to do it that way. We need to do it right. We're not, the removal of 50% of the parcels that are even possible to cultivate cannabis on from even being able to be utilized was not specifically, I don't believe, a study in the P E I R. So I don't see how this, how we can ignore that, but I also don't see how this could just be totally NOE, notice of exemption from CEQA with it being clearly a concentration of the activity into the remaining 50% of what's left. And we may only have 530 permits, but...
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else on Zoom?
Veronica Kelly Albeiz?
Hi, this is Veronica Kelly Albeiz, Douglas City. Unfortunately, I'm out of town and the report didn't come in on the website until after I had left, but I didn't want to miss this meeting. I wanted to be able to ask that you support opt-out areas. I think one of our biggest issues right now is that we don't have an updated general plan. And to say that, and all of the opt-out areas have been based in land use issues, that's going to be and it should be on an opt-out overlay. But there's always problems with water, odor, traffic, all of those things, cumulative effects should be considered. And I think that until that new general plan is out and you can really hear the voices of everyone, you know, we want to make sure that the people in the cannabis industry is not in an area that has to get changed after we come up with a general plan. It's that whole thing of we are building the plane while we fly it. With this, this process needs thought, planning, it doesn't need politics in that sense, but it does need to be looked at to be fair and just for everybody within Trinity County. And I think the opt-out is just an option and an avenue for your constituents to be able to come and say to you as well as the board of supervisors, what it is they see for their community. So I'm going to leave it to your better position on all of this and I hope you do it all thoughtful and equal thought. And I just want to say I do support the opt-out areas that are currently being withdrawn or being permanent. And there are land use issues within these opt-outs that have been already established and there can be more. We already know them, we come up against them every day. So just please, keep in mind all of that and I thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else on Zoom?
Jeff?
I have Carolyn Pencil, who's with me on my account. May she speak now?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, this is Carolyn Pencil from Lewiston. I'm in one of the opt-out areas. And again, when this whole thing started, we put the cart before the horse. We had no idea that rural residential meant commercial cannabis. We would have stood up and fought at the very beginning. The grower lied to everybody, made sure we were, he said he was not growing. That was great. Comes in as a grower, we got together, we put together the opt-out, the whole community came together and said, we do not want this in our neighborhood. We need to honor the majority that says these opt-out areas need to be considered and validated because we were there first, we didn't want the grows in our neighborhood. So please consider the opt-outs to make them permanent. And it's a land use issue that is not conducive to a neighborhood. So again, the general plan should be done before any more considerations are done so then we don't put the cart before the horse again and have to rework everything and go backwards. And the growers concerned that they're going to lose the value of their property, well, the property value went up with the grow, not just because it was there. So we were there first and our properties are negatively impacted by them being there. And I don't have any sympathy for them not getting an exponential profit for ruining the neighborhoods. That's all. Thank you very much for letting me speak and please consider the opt-outs, making them permanent.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else on Zoom?
We can't hear you. We'll move on to Olivia Kakavo.
Hey, hello. It's actually Chief Post Chris on Olivia's Zoom. Usually, I'll read speed up opt-outs and all, but as one of this small group of individuals in Trinity County that has paid a disproportionate amount towards the general, the general plan update as a licensee, we're talking about literally regulating the land use of Trinity County's virtually only industry, 50% of the land, like 50% of the available parcels we're talking about regulating our only industry on. And somehow, nobody has really, on the commission stepped up and said, this is literally what the general plan is. So unless, like, feels like we're trying to make a huge county update without actually doing the huge county update. So I think, you know, all the speakers have shown that there's ample reasons to, you know, put more time in research and practice and I hope that, I hope that we do that.
Thank you for your comments.
Jeff?
She's muted. Jeff, we need you to unmute yourself.
Unfortunately, we can't hear you, Jeff. Sorry.
Hi, this is Lauren Wills from Lewiston. I wanted to thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I just want to remind the commission that these opt-outs came before the board with a majority of signatures from the property owners in the opt-out areas. And the Rush Creek and Lewiston expansion urgency ordinance have been vetted publicly numerous times. And the board of supervisors has humanely approved these urgency ordinances over and over. So to say that these are being rushed, I just disagree with that. I think they have been publicly vetted and I would ask that you please take that into consideration. The urgency of moving forward with this tonight is that the Rush Creek urgency ordinance is going to expire. So they don't have a lot of time and they're out of extensions. And so again, I would ask that you give thoughtful consideration to that. The people have spoken in that area and the board has voted, findings were made. So I do feel like in many respects, people are suggesting that we take steps backwards and people have worked very hard to get where we are tonight. And I appreciate everybody who's been involved in drafting this ordinance. And I would ask you to move forward with that, definitely in the best interest of the Rush Creek urgency ordinance and opt-out area and also for the Lewiston expansion I guess that's pretty much all I have to say. I just have one other personal comment. And I feel that people frequently deflect some of the issues at hand between the illegal operations and the legal operations. And I have had both in my neighborhood and I have to echo some of the other commenters. We get a lot of support from law enforcement on the illegal grows. But, and I've made recommendations to the commission before and to the board, check on the legal grows as well in our neighborhoods. All you have to do is check on the complaints that have been filed and the number of complaints. And this is not just about the illegal grows. So I just don't appreciate them being confused.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else on Zoom?
Jeff?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Can you hear me? Oh, great. Finally. Sorry. Jeff Zinnia, I'd like to echo what Matt was saying about grandfathering in existing, existing growers, existing water board numbers. Farmers need to be allowed to pivot, you know, and you're developing these overlays for future opt-out areas and it's all real nendy and honestly, I, if farmers aren't allowed to pivot, you're going to take everything away from them. If they're not allowed to change their operation or expand their operation, as any other farmer would do that's not in an opt-out area, it's really unfair, unjust. It's a new industry, farmers need to be allowed to pivot and grow how they see fit so that they can survive. This all seems kind of rushed, there's a bunch of new stuff in there that I'm just hearing about tonight. There's a bunch of new stuff in there that I'm just hearing about tonight. And I don't know, I don't see what the rush is. But, you know, nothing else moves fast in this county. I don't know why this has to. And then, yeah, just think about what's just for the existing farmers. And what qualifies a new opt-out area? You know, certain people had their way. They make the whole county an opt-out area. And, you know, I don't have anybody within a mile of me. And I don't want to be in an opt-out area, and I don't see why I should be. So that's what I got to say. Just be fair, be just, and don't rush this thing because there's really no need to.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else on Zoom?
Nope.
Okay, at this time, we're going to take a 10-minute recess. We'll re-adjourn at 8:41.
Someone just popped up. Too late?
It's too late.
Sorry.
Closed.
We also call EMI.
Hi, I'm Lisa.
We're going to go ahead and restart the meeting.
True.
Okay, at this time, we're going to re-adjourn the meeting and bring it back to the commission for discussion. For the two commissioners, do you have any comments?
I just have a couple. So for general plan consistency, I would recommend that we add by encouraging tourism. That is in the general plan. And actually, you know, in some areas, yeah, it is cannabis tourism. But in the opt-out areas, for those of you who were here when we developed the ordinance originally, the concern was, you know, people come up for wilderness experience in the Northlake community, particularly the Highway 3 corridor. You know, they're between the lake and the Trinity Alps wilderness. And so cannabis cultivation is not necessarily consistent with that wilderness experience. So, you know, that is a land use kind of consideration. And so I would ask that you include by encouraging tourism in the general plan consistency. The other comments I had, I mentioned earlier, I think we do need to correct the language where we're discussing modification to add cultivation when we're talking about footprint. So we don't want people to modify their cultivation footprint. But the commission talked about adding, you know, water tanks and stuff like that as being an acceptable kind of modification. So somehow, we need to make that distinction. And I think we could do that by adding cultivation to the language where we describe footprint.
On that, what would you think about license type? Like, it was recommended going from an outdoor cultivation to 5,000 square feet of mixed light so that the farmers can adapt to the ever-changing environment within the same footprint?
I was not going to make that recommendation.
Okay.
The last comment I had was basically, I agree that non-retail storefronts and microbusiness can be carried out in the opt-out areas. I'm not sure why those were originally excluded. I think it was because we didn't have a definition for them. We were really just working on the criteria for cultivation. So other than those minor changes, and hopefully at some point defining what is active and in good standing, I think that this should move forward.
Well, you bring up active and good standing, and that's my biggest problem with this. Because this blanket statement or this blanket document is going to hurt 99% of the growers who through no fault of their own, either for staff delays or they're out of compliance right now. So if this blanket statement is adopted as written, that's going to make all of them, the grandfathered clause, the legacy farmers, anyone who has tried to jump through the current hoops as set, that's going to make them all obsolete.
Except that the staff does have a procedure they're using right now, this March 3, 2022 memo, where they're currently going through the files and determining if something is inactive and placed in closed status. And it lists the criteria. So they're already doing that.
Well, they say they're doing it, but the average turnaround time for a CUP, I think from the last meeting, was about four years. I don't have any comfort in that. Saying they're trying to work through it isn't... And I understand staff shortages and all the logistics that go along with it, but I'm in no way okay with a blanket document and not clear defined guidelines of what's good standing, just passing this document as written. I think there has to be some clarity, some definition on those items.
Coming back with clarity, crystal clarity of what good standing is. Okay, yeah. I think we all would agree with that. Yeah. I have, just looking at Exhibit A for considerations, and just reinforcing that a big concern that I hold is not the existing opt-outs, but laying the framework for future opt-outs. So it mentions in Exhibit A, number two, with considerations for establishment of a new or amended commercial cannabis opt-out areas. Number two, effects of other geologically, geographically based restrictions. The number and proximity of other location controls in an area shall be considered. Too many areas in proximity to one another could potentially create unequitable burdens on the other regions in the county. The size and geographical area proposed for the opt-out area is relevant. And so on that note, it seems like, starting from the very north part of the county, from Coffee Creek to Trinity Center to Trinity Lake, down to the Rush Creek opt-out, down to the Lewiston, and all the way to, what is it, almost a 299, right, with the Grass Valley Creek? It is a substantial corridor that is, what is that, 70 miles?
Off limits.
70 miles? And so how is number two, effects on geographical based restrictions, how is that taken into consideration with the existing opt-out zones?
Well, the areas that are opting out are the neighborhoods there. That's not all the land use there. So, and again, if you want to fix that, you're going to have to take away opt-out areas. Is that what you're proposing, to take away opt-out areas?
I do not want to take out opt-out. I respect the right of a community to come together and have an opt-out. This document that we are recommending to the supervisors needs to be based in sound land use and in facts that don't contradict themselves. And so just, you know, I'm pointing out some holes in the document that need to be considered, maybe with staff, county council, coming back for rewording. But when there's explicit contradictions, they need to be addressed, including findings in the opt-out zones for illegal operations, such as illegal water pumping. And there's a number of them. I didn't write them all down. But there are findings that have nothing to do with the licensed farms. And so the findings for each one of these opt-out zones for the permanent overlay, I believe each one of them, from Coffee Creek all the way down to Weaverville, need to be stated or established in clear findings. And I'm yet to see that. So I'm going to, I'm not motioning, but I'm going to encourage that we continue this so that until we can get more information on the findings that establish these opt-out zones, so that the same mistakes possibly don't continue in future opt-out zones.
Just a personal note, the people who said they want to live their life the way they want, and they don't, you know, they came here for a certain way of life, and they don't want these farms, like some of the lady and the gentleman there spoke very passionately about it, I 100% agree with them. I don't think anyone is trying to get rid of opt-outs in its entirety, but there certainly is problems with this document as written. But I 100% agree with the well-spoken lady and the gentleman with their concerns, and I think they're valid concerns. So, you know, with respect to them, there has to be some clarity put forward in this with understanding and care for them as well as members of our community.
To make sure that this document is in sound land use, so to minimize the possible litigations.
Correct.
I have to echo in everything Rory has said. Because this is, am I in favor of opt-out areas? Absolutely, 100%. I am in huge favor of opt-out things because why? It's like, you know, in a community, and it's funny, y'all mentioned dry counties. I lived in Mississippi for a while, and I was in a dry county. And so I know what a dry county is like. But it didn't faze me one way or the other. I don't drink, so it's like, that didn't faze me. And it's like, and the cannabis thing really doesn't faze me because I'm not part of the industry there either. But I also know, though, in my neck of the woods and stuff like that, I have individuals who live in a subdivision, or if you'd call it a subdivision, it's the closest thing, I guess, we'd have to subdivision. And it was like, in the fall of the year, it's like, they have to move out because of the stench, because of the neighbors who's just right above them. And it was like, and that's just, I've been to their house many a times, and well, actually, the house got burned out in this go-around, everybody got burned out there. But the truth of the matter is, that was a valid, they had a valid point. They're elderly couple, and it was like, in the fall of the year, they'd have to move to town to be with their daughter because it was like they couldn't handle the stench. And so I'm in favor of opt-outs. But I also, though, like, the whole thing that has been said thus far is like, the... Oh, I lost my train of thought for a second. Give me just a second. Yes, thank you. It was like, the individuals, I want to be just in where we stand with our, the people who are permitted and who are trying to do everything right and go by the guidelines. But because of the backup that's going on, on everything, it was like, I don't know how many cannabis farms we have that are even legal at this point in perfect standing. And it was like, if we were to pass this with not that clarity, it was like, that's not just to them. That's really not just to them. It was like, because you know what, it's like, just like, the only individual who spoke tonight from my district was Mr. Jeff, and he's out there where he's at. And it's like, and honestly, I've been to his house. Actually, I was supposed to build his house before I had changed professions. And I had to tell him that I couldn't do it because I was changing some things. But the truth of the matter is, it's like, where Jeff stands, and it's like, and I've heard some talk that it's like they're trying to make the valley an opt-out zone. And guess what? He's not the only one who grows in the valley. But if the valley were to go and surround around him and become a non-opt-out zone, it's like, we need to protect him because he was there first. And it was like, and he needs to be able to have the right to be able to do what he needs to do so that he can survive and thrive.
100% agree. Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah. I have a question, actually, to kind of put that question back to staff. And is there anything in this document, because it is pretty deep, that addresses legacy farmers, people that are in these opt-out areas that are established? Is there anything in the document? Because I know that is what we talked about during the workshop. Did that get addressed? And is it addressed? And is there any kind of mechanism to ensure that?
If I could, Mr. Chair, Heidi Chudin?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. So there is, this wording that we're using in here, which is problematic, and I think that we can work with the attorneys to revise it as this goes up to the board, is compliant, active, and in good standing. This actually came from the deliberations that you conducted during the workshop. That's where the wording came from. And I think that we can work to give meaning to those words. But my takeaway from your workshop was that your direction was to allow operators, sites, legacy sites, I believe is the term you've been using, to continue to operate. And you put some bounds around that. And there was nothing about this action that was intended to constrict that. So I think one of the things that we can do is work on the definition of those terms, which originally came from the workshop. As well, we could clarify grandfathering, which it was my understanding of the direction of the planning commission that these sites should be grandfathered in, that the grandfathering that's in the existing code should remain, and that the individuals that are operating legally, if that's the right word, in their current sites should be allowed to continue. And that's what's reflected in these documents as well, and I think we can clarify that. And then I would say maybe one other thing, if I could, on the findings. So findings are, I think of them as the written explanation of the land use decision. And I took a shot at them based on what I heard and the direction from the workshop. But there's always room for modification or clarification of the findings. The first place I would go, actually, to see if there's any particular changes, would be right back to your planning commission, if there's any particular changes you'd like to see reflected in them. Otherwise, when we take this forward to the board, we would ask them to also weigh in on whether we've accurately reflected what their thinking is in the whole, not specifically for every single individual parcel, but in the whole, in establishing these areas. The only other thing I wanted to mention for your thoughts is that the current boundaries of the opt-outs are not changed by what's in this staff report. So this discussion of the amount of county that is currently within an opt-out is not being modified at all by this action. It is creating a different type of zoning tool to document it because you don't really have a way to have them mapped right now in your zoning code. The typical way you would do that is with a zone. And so an overlay zone, which crosses over principal zones, is exactly the tool that you would use to do this. It's used in corollary types of land use activities all up and down the state. It's a standard practice in my field. So using, creating an overlay and using it this way, all you're doing is placing it over the areas that this county has already deemed are appropriate for opt-outs. Maybe the two differences is pulling in Rush Creek Estates and Lewiston Expansion, which are currently in opt-outs, but in an urgency format. And as was noted before, one of those is going to be expiring, and the other one will as well if it's not continued. So the idea was to pull those into the ordinance so that they don't expire. But the boundaries of your opt-outs are not modified by this action. Thank you.
Thank you for those clarifications. So, you know, with that being said, I think, you know, although the document is definitely not perfect, you know, and like everybody has pointed out, and that we've been pointing out for ever since I've got on this commission, is that we do not have a general plan. But the reality is, is that if we had a general plan, we probably wouldn't be sitting here tonight trying to deal with opt-outs because this program probably would have been implemented in a much because this program probably would have been implemented in a much different way. Had, had, you know, a plan been applied that was relevant to times of today and not in the seventies, um, or eighties, whenever it was. It, 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 it's not applicable to, to now.
100% of the document you have to guide.
And just like our last meeting, you know, we can't stop moving forward on things for lack of a general plan. We have to move forward. And we have to get something done, something across the finish line. We do have to protect these opt-outs, these people that have spoken, that we've approved, you know, to have opt-outs as a county. And make sure that they're honored, as well as protect the farmers that we agreed to protect that are in these opt-outs. So I think, you know, in light of that, that, that we could add some verbiage, we could add some guidance to this document and move it back to the board, much like what we did with storefront retail last meeting. Let them add the proper verbiage, get some clarification, and some protections for legacy farmers, and, and move on, quite frankly, to, to planning issues.
So just, just to, in my head, you want to concrete the verbiage, but also with the mind to protect the grandfathered or legacy farmers? Okay, because there, there's going to be no scenario where I'm going to ever be against a grandfather legacy. If they're in compliance and they're doing everything right, there's no scenario where I'm going to vote to move them out. And I, I don't believe, I speak for myself up here with just that thought. But with what you're saying, I tend to agree.
I mean, I agree, same thing. I mean, I want to protect the grandfathered farms. I've always said that, so.
You know, on that.
I think this does that. It is a little fuzzy on the, what is compliant, active, and in good standing.
Just, just for clarity, because with all due respect, Chair, you've mentioned it before, that we don't have a general plan. And we are in a quasi-judicial role that needs, you know, and we need to be clear to the public that we do have a general plan. The general plan is old. The general plan might be perceived as obsolete, agreed upon, but we have a general plan. And we have that general plan until it gets updated. And so when you say that we don't have one, it, it gives false impressions.
So just, so I clarify myself, we don't have a general plan that is relevant to today.
Well, it's the, it's the guiding document that we have, and we must use that guiding document until there's a new document. So we cannot, we cannot work without a general plan. It, it is our guiding template until there's a new one. That's, that's the law of the land.
Well, I didn't say it wasn't the law.
Well, you said we didn't have one.
I just said it's not relevant.
Well, I mean, it's what we have, so.
Honestly, Duncan, it's not so known. I don't, I don't have an argument with you, Chair.
Okay, just, just, just for clarity to the public, we do have a general plan.
We absolutely have a general, general plan. I just believe it's not relevant, and it needs to be rewritten.
To a point agreed. Um, with regards to the grandfathering, I, I would like to echo what the commission has communicated, but also to add the caveat that, to add properties that have been, that have applied for the water board pre the, the, the opt-out zones, pre, I think it's two.
2016?
2016. Who have, um, um, should have an opportunity to establish a farm in the opt-out zones. They have been in good standing with the opt-outs, or not with the, with the water board. They have paid the $2,500, but they have attempted in the past to apply, and it has been denied by the county because it's in an opt-out zone. These are oftentimes places that have, had illegal operations in them. Oftentimes, these operations have a million gallon pond and have no neighbor for a thousand feet. And so that is what all other cannabis farmers, um, that is, that is the threshold for all other cannabis farmers. So, and we're probably only talking about a few within the opt-out zones. But I think that would be just to allow the, um, the operation by way.
But what about, so, so we have one in our district, um, who, um, sorry, in the Coffee Creek District, who, um, at one point had a water board permit. The property was sold, the permit wasn't transferred. They never really applied for a permit. Their greenhouses all kind of got collapsed under snow. They haven't really followed up for years. So at what point, even though they had a water board permit, do we say, that's no longer grandfathered? They just kind of have fallen by the wayside?
Well, there is, there is, if you, um, when you, when you apply with the water board, you have to register on a, on a, on a yearly basis, on a annual basis.
They've continued to have their water board permit. That's the great area.
Commissioner, if you'd hold for a second. Ms. Chudin is actually raising her hand here. She could probably give us some clarification on this.
Thank you so much. I think I might be able to. So we previously discussed this as a team and with county council, and received a preliminary opinion at least that on the issue of the water board permits, even if there's no cannabis cultivation license, that per your ordinance, those permits are grandfathered into opt-out zones if that's where they're currently located. So I think we could carry that forward and make that clear. But that's already in your code. That's a matter of interpretation. I suppose we can clarify it if you wish, but it's already in there.
So if they've had, they've, so are you saying they've continued to renew their water board permit? They haven't let it lapse?
I would ask for counsel, excuse me, to help me with that. But my understanding is that they're the holder of a water board permit. Even if they do not have a cultivation license, they're, they can be grandfathered into the opt-out zone. Maybe Sean or Margaret could weigh in on your more precise question.
Counselor, are you there?
Yes, we are. So it sounds as if the question is whether they have to keep it renewed in order to qualify to be intrinsular, or if they just got it in 2016. Is that sufficient?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, my intonation that I would like to do some research and write back with a final decision is that they would have to keep that renewed. They would have to keep it in that license or else it wouldn't eligible. But I would like a chance to double check the ordinance, and I can most likely get back to you in a couple minutes.
Thank you for that. And, and again, this is, this is not to take away from the existing opt-outs. This is an ordinance that is established for the purpose of solidifying the existing opt-outs, but for expanding opt-out zones. And so I am yet to see the findings that were utilized for these existing opt-out zones set in, well, in some cases, in the reality that affect that is the licensed farms, such as illegal pumping, et cetera. And so I, I have not seen any proof that the lack of water in one region is because of a cannabis, cannabis production. And so I think there needs to be, um, um, the findings need to have stipulations. There needs to be a responsibility more than just accusations. There needs to be, there needs to be, there needs to be scientific data, which is very easy to do.
Yeah, but I mean, again, if you were at these hundreds of people showing up at the Performing Arts Center of public hearings, and it wasn't just water. I know you're kind of focusing on that. I mean, it was, you know, our economy depends on attracting tourisms, tourism and retirees, and, you know, those kind of economic drivers. People that buy property and live there, and, you know, their land use decisions are based on not having commercial cultivation. Other land uses, you know, maybe they're up for grabs, other commercial cannabis uses. But cultivation was clearly defined by hundreds of people. So somehow people keep forgetting that.
So as, I mean, and if it is established in sound logic and land use and facts, then keep it in. I'm not saying that the other findings are irrelevant. I'm not saying, but what I'm saying is if there is a finding that is not backed up in, with scientific data. For instance, I'll, I'll, I'll say, again, like I expressed at a meeting, there was a farm in Hayfork that is, there's three farms above an elderly couple on Lake Road. They were running out of water. They expressed concerns to me. It, it, I reacted to it, it, because I care about these elders. And then six months later, they found that they had a hole in their, their, their spring, and they actually did have the water. So there was this assumption that they're taking the water away, but an assumption without the, 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 the scientific facts is, is, is problematic.
But that's not an opt-out area, so there isn't a water issue there.
It could be an opt-out area. That's, that's, my concern is that this is going to be applied. And so these, these, right, for instance, a lack of water, um, dust control, dust control is established mitigation, mitigated in the EIR. So why would that be a finding? There is.
I think, I think the findings come from people's experiences in these opt-out zones. So they're relevant, they're scientific, because somebody actually experienced it.
Well, my neighbor thinks the world is flat. So, and he experienced that. So just experiences is not enough to establish policy.
Findings, findings, when it comes to impact, and that is what we're talking about, of a commercial business, can be a lot of different things, and it can look a lot of different ways. And it certainly is not all scientific. When I have 20 cars, well, when I have 20 cars pulling into a residential parcel, that's, that, that's not a scientific thing. It's 20 cars pulling into a parcel that impacts quality of life.
Then make a finding for that. But if there's a finding.
I think that's what they've tried to do here.
Well, I'm not saying try. I'm saying that the findings, if there's a finding to cut somebody off of their ability to have business and commerce and employment, it needs to have scientific backing. And I'm saying I support opt-out zones, but we need to make this document bulletproof. And right now, there is.
No documents can be bulletproof.
Well, I, I want to be able to be, to be able to hold water enough. Because I just, one glance at it, we have the whole audience, attorneys, saying that there is inconsistencies in here, right? Why is, I mean, illegal pumping from unauthorized water sources, right? And the lack of water for cultivation and dust control. Why is that finding in this document? Can, and can that finding now be used for further opt-out zones in other neighborhoods?
Commissioner, can you speak to that? So maybe we can get some clarity for Duncan.
I can certainly, I can certainly try. So I, I was hearing two different things, and I want to make sure I understand the question. So one was about the findings for the Rush Creek Estates and Lewiston Expansion area. And then the other, I believe, was about the findings that were made for the other opt-outs that have already been in your code. Let's start with the latter. So the, for the findings for the opt-outs already listed in your code, I did not research those, but those are a matter of fact. You should be able to go to the county clerk for the Board of Supervisors and pull the actions from when those opt-outs were created. And that would be the documentation of whatever findings were made at those, at that time. I don't know what they were, sir, or how rigorous they were, but they, uh, they withstood the test of time in that they were accepted by a majority of the board in order to put the opt-outs into place. And they weren't challenged and remain there at this time. So those opt-outs are part of your code. And there, for me, they were sort of like the existing condition, if you will. The direction was never to modify the opt-outs, and so I didn't make any attempts to do that. For Rush Creek and for Lewiston Expansion area, it was a similar kind of assignment. Those were urgency ordinances already passed, in one case, three times, and in another case, twice, by your Board of Supervisors. I don't know what the actions of the Planning Commission were on those, but I did focus on the board's actions. And so part of this assignment as well was to make sure that those were brought into the ordinance in a, in an appropriate way. And that's when we felt that the idea of the overlay zone was the best, um, best practice to do that. And that's all that we intended to have happen here. So then with regard to the specific findings, there, they need to be, as, as best each decision-making body can, can decide. They need to reflect what the majority of the decision-making body believes is the appropriate decision-making that explains why they're taking a particular action. And I did take a shot at that using the, the guidelines, the draft guidelines as a tool. But they would always benefit by additional clarification and additions from the decision-making body, and in this case, that would be all of you. So, for example, I'm hearing loud and clear that there's concern about references to illegal activities, and that's pretty simple for me to remove that as that moves up to the board. I think you could simply direct me to do that. If there are things that you feel should be added, we can do that as well. So, so that some direction from your planning commission would be really helpful making the modifications. But if not, even just general direction to me, and then I can make sure that that's reflected in what goes forward.
Yeah, thank you. You know, another example is Grass Valley contains important salmonoid habitat, which merit preemptive protections provided by this action. What creek in Trinity County doesn't? There's a, there's a, there is, and there is a, there is a vineyard that is not prohibited right up to the creek shore. And so what I would like to encourage the commission to put forth is that all findings are set in scientific facts, and that the findings need to be specific for that particular region. It's established that why is this particular region specifically different than other locations?
So it is specifically different. I mean, anything upstream of the dam has no salmon. So that's, that provision wouldn't apply there. There's a lot, a lot of Hayfork that doesn't have salmon, salmonid habitat. So, I mean, that creek, Grass Valley Creek, specifically in the Trinity River Restoration Plan is identified as a salmonid habitat. So it is unique. That is a fact, that is a scientific fact.
Right, but then it's not a scientific fact that a cannabis farm, who has to make sure all of their, like, that signs up with the water board and the Department of Fish and Wildlife, if it has a negative effect on the environment, especially on endangered species such as salmonoid, it cannot exist. So having a finding that the EIR, that Cow Fire, the Department of Fish and Wildlife, that the water board mitigate that, it is setting, what it's doing is, is trying to build a, is building a case on why something shouldn't be here with findings that are honestly irrelevant. So these findings need to be established in facts. And so I, we can go through this, we can go through it finding by finding, and cross them out and adjust them if we need to. But until, for this to go forward, and again, this is because this is not, I mean, we could also just address the Grass Valley Creek opt-out. But this is the whole entire document, this is all opt-out zones, including an ordinance for future opt-outs. So it's a lot to push through.
The one thing that, that, what you're saying, I don't believe that is true. I mean, I believe that findings for opt-out zones are unique to opt-out zones. So the findings in the future for each opt-out zone would be unique to those zones, just like these are unique to the zones that they're in. So to make a blanket statement that this is going to be law for every new opt-out zone, I don't believe is true and correct, because these are obviously different for each zone.
Setting precedence is what it's.
Well, so is everything we do.
You're exactly right.
We, we are never going to agree on everything, and, you know, there's no perfect document. I can't, you know, I, I think we should give clarity. I, I think, you know, I think the number one thing here is to protect legacy farmers. I think the rest of this has been well-established by these opt-out zones. As far as future opt-out zones, I don't think it's our job to try to speculate what those will or won't look like, or what characteristics that those will or won't have, because we haven't done any scientific findings on those areas. These actually do have scientific, I'm assuming that when they did these opt-out zones, that all that stuff was taken into account. Am I not correct in that, Ms. Chudin?
I don't know whether there were any specific scientific analysis done for the urgency ordinances. But that's not necessarily required to substantiate findings. Findings can reflect other substantial evidence besides scientific studies. So I don't think that's necessarily problematic.
I don't think, I don't either.
So what I would encourage this commission to do is go through Appendix A, or it's not Appendix, what are they? Attachment A and Attachment B. Attachment A and Attachment B, um, line by line, and, and give recommendations or give guidance to staff to clear it up, so that we can clean up, because that's our role as the Planning Commission, to clean up the documents, make sure they're as solid as possible before handing them forth. And so do that, and then we continue it to a future meeting, um, hopefully soon, where we can have a, a more solid document.
I would disagree. Uh, two, two points. One is, uh, who's to say tourism that we're trying to attract here wouldn't benefit from a cannabis industry here? And, two, I don't think it's lost on the fact that we had these workshop meetings little over a month ago, and we have this in-depth document, but yet we can't process one license in almost five months.
So to answer your question about tourism, um, the K O A, which is downwind from a, what was a, um, grow, um, had several families, numerous families cancel their camping reservations because of the odor every evening.
There's only five grows on that road.
Please hold your comments.
Were those illegal grows?
Yes, they're all illegal.
But the point is, even one big grow on that road, the way the down canyon winds happen every evening, it goes right to a, a recreation area where families decided not to camp.
Right.
So, and, you know, there are other recreation, you know, like I said, people come up here for a family wilderness opportunity, and they don't always want to see commercial cultivation. That's just incongruous.
I agree, but the reference you made for the K O A, is that in a current opt-out area?
Yes.
And is that, was the farms that were concerned, were they legal or illegal?
Both.
If I may add to that, with clarity to Director Connell, with the, um, um, Attachment C of the EIR, is smell mitigated with, um, with, with farms? Is that a, is that a stipulation for, for cultivation? And so therefore, down canyon, um, businesses, will, if, will they be affected by cannabis farms?
That's unique topography.
Well, they're supposed to be, have filters, and if they're close enough, they're supposed to be in houses with filters.
This is outdoor cultivation.
Yeah, how do you filter an outdoor crop?
Well, you, maybe you talk to Director Connell, because we got a book this thick that talks about it.
Well, it is not possible.
But my point was, that was why it was created to be an opt-out area, it was one of the reasons, among many, to be an opt-out area for cultivation. Now, there is still a, potentially, a site there that's grandfathered in, and they're going to have to deal with, there were several, about five letters in your packet complaining about that. Um, and so they're going to have to deal with that issue. But, and, and again, I'm not trying to take away any grandfathering, I'm just trying to explain to you that certain recreation and retirees, that economic group, don't always think that it's compatible with commercial cultivation.
And I fully respect that. I fully respect that. Alls I'm asking is that the findings, all the findings, not most of the findings, not some of the findings, but 100% of the findings are based in facts.
I think she said, go ahead, Ms. Houdin.
I, I just, uh, wanted to get back with you with the information from County Council, if that would be appropriate, that we were just researching.
Yes, please.
So, um, they would have had to apply for their Water Board permits by the dates that were specified, I think between 2016 and 2017, but they would not have to have maintained the Water Board's licenses, is the answer on one of the items. And then also, I was asked to point out that, um, this aspect of grandfathering is in the current code, but it is discretionary, so it would be at the Planning Commission's direction whether or not to include this language for grandfathering and take it, or this interpretation for grandfathering, and take it forward to the board.
I make a motion to add the grandfathering into our recommended, the grandfathering of properties that have, are, that have signed up with the Water Board, um, as, um, are, are... Yeah, I'm having a hard time articulating it.
Yeah, I think I could help you. Give me one second to pull up the section of the code.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely, it's, uh, I think it's 030. It's 050. So in Section 17 dot 43 dot 050, in A under six and under seven, um, I can put this on the screen if I'm allowed to screen share.
Please do. I'm sorry.
Hang on one second. Are you able to see my cursor?
Yes.
Okay. So we're in 17 dot 43 dot 050, we're in A, limitation on location to cultivate cannabis, under A eight, uh, excuse me, under four, my bad, four, for timber production, production zones.
Actually, it's seven.
Well, it's in both of them. So if they, if, if, here refers to enrollment in the Water Board by this date, and then also in seven, for these three areas by this date. And so I believe the motion that you're proposing to make, Commissioner, is that in those areas where these, uh, grandfathering exceptions are provided, which would be in four and in seven, um, that that be automatic rather than discretionary, I believe is where you were headed?
Yes, I would like, that's, that is my motion on the table.
Let me stop my screen share so you can conduct your business. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll second it.
So I would, again, I would strongly disagree, just because we do have some where they applied for the permit, the Water Board permit, they had a license, and then since then, for many, many years, they have not. And so there has to be some criteria where someone can't come in 50 years from now and buy a piece of property that had a Water Board license in 2016, and since then, the neighborhood has grown around it and assumed that there's not a grow, and now there's a grow. I mean, there's, it has to be a limit, because, I mean, why can't you do 20 years, 50 years from now, come back in and say, oh, this, back in 2016, it had a Water Board permit? There's got to be a cutoff.
Why have we not applied that to the other people that come in front of us with their projects taking, I think 10 or 12 years was the project?
So, so could we address that with, I mean, if a person has been actively seeking a license, and to no fault of their own, have not been issued one because of lack of county staff, couldn't we use that as the bar?
Yeah, someone has, someone has the Water Board permit, they've renewed the Water Board permit, but they haven't been able to get their CCL, yeah, they should be able to...
The good faith type thing?
Yeah.
Like we've applied to other people?
Exactly.
Exactly. They've worked through the system, they, they...
I mean, they're in the system, they're actively seeking it, that is grandfathering. Somebody coming in from out of the blue trying to do something is certainly not a grandfather, they're somebody trying to get on with something because of a code that was established.
I think I'd like to rescind my motion, as I've, I've considered it. Right now, it is permitted, but there is, there is overview from the Planning Commission. Rather than having oversight from the Planning Commission, my motion was to make it discretionary, which was automatic. And so I think if it comes in front of the Planning Commission, we will be able to hear from public, hear from the neighbors, take all that into consideration. I, and I, I respect that being the way, the, the process for it.
But it's, it's not really discretionary per se. I mean, if, if the ordinance says, if we, if we have Ms. Houdin put something in the ordinance that says, you're, um, part of the definition of compliant, active, and in good standing, is that you have, um, a, a Water Board permit that was applied before those specified dates, and that it is currently valid, right? It's been renewed. That's all we need to, to say.
So, but at this point, so what you're saying is we'd like to, um, actually make it more stringent, right? Because right now, the way it is, um, the way it stands, if we don't change it, is that if you have signed up with the Water Board before those particular dates, um, then, and if you want to apply for a permit or a license, it must come in front of the Planning Commission. And what you're saying is that if it is not active and continually, um, pursued, then that opportunity falls off the table.
You, you've lost your grandfathering.
Would you make sense, like, I mean, if somebody hasn't gone after this, they're obviously not a grand... Sorry. If they haven't gone after it, they're not a grandfather. I mean, somebody that's been grandfathered in is somebody that's actively pursuing the license, actively engaged in business, actively trying to participate in the program. If that's not happening, then we're just opening the door for anybody.
Well, I see what you're saying, but...
There has to be faith.
There is, for instance, just, um, an example to put some depth to it, in the, in the Coffee Creek opt-out area, right? Let's say there's a parcel that has, that's 60 acres, that has no neighbors within 1,000 feet of it, that has a million acre pond, right? And it's signed up with the Water Board, um, and, um, and it has not been active. But then somebody wants to purchase it somewhere down the road, or someone has purchased it, and they want an opportunity to establish a legal business on their, on their, on their property. Let me finish, please. And, and that could go, and so I think that have the opportunity to come before the commission, so that they can hear, like, oh, wait a minute, how close are the neighbors? Are you a resident here? Are you a carpetbagger, so to speak, that just wants to flip a property? That allows us to have discretion.
But that would say, I mean, the opt-out zone kind of is the whole point.
Well, what's the, well, if there's a property that has water, if there's an opt-out zone because there's not enough water, but there's a million acres, if there's an opt-out zone, or a million acre pond, gallon pond, and then part of the opt-out zone also is because of concentrations of population, but this parcel's on 150 acres that has no neighbors. So there's, there, I, I would like there to be some discretion in our ability.
But the discretion would be to deny it, and I'm saying we should allow them to continue to claim grandfathering. You're, you're actually, um, shooting them down. I'm trying to say, if, if they still had, if they had originally a valid water permit, and there's still a valid water permit, and potentially, you know, they want to apply for a license, cool, they should be considered just straight off grandfathering. And you're saying, no, they shouldn't be considered straight off grandfathering, the Planning Commission may decide to deny them their permit.
What I'm saying is to keep, to keep the, um, the ordinance as it is, as, as County Council had, had, had presented it to us. I think that that's adequate, I think that that's fair, and I would like to not touch it.
But if you, if you keep it the way it is, someone can come back in 50 years and say, now I want to have this license, even though the, the Water Board permit's been inactive for the last 45 years.
That's right, and if it comes in front of the Planning Commission, and the whole community's in uproar. Um, but if it's not, who cares if it's in 50 years, right? It's an agricultural piece of land that's got ample water, that has no neighbors, maybe it's surrounded by SPI on four sides, and they clearcut all of it every 40 years. Nobody seems to care about that.
Ms. Houdin, I seen you had your hand raised earlier, did you have something to clarify for us?
Um, I don't think so, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. No, I don't at this time.
No motions on the table at this point.
Okay. Anybody else have a motion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll motion that we, um, continue this discussion until a further date when staff can provide the information that we, that we are asking for. After this motion, if this motion passes, um, my, I would, would hope that we would go through it and give recommendations to staff for how this ordinance and the recommendations can be more appropriate. I'm sorry, that was a real lengthy...
I would like to do a subsequent motion to approve... Let me get this together. Right here. I'd like to do a second motion, a subsequent motion, that we find the adoption of the proposed resolution ordinance that falls within the scope of the cannabis program here, certified by the Board of Supervisors on December 21st, 2020, Resolution 20-10. Adopt Attachment A, A Resolution of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity, adopting guidelines for the establishment of commercial cannabis opt-out areas. Adopt Attachment B in ordinance of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity, amending the title 17 zoning of the county code to create and apply a cannabis exclusion overlay zone district. Direct staff to file sequest, note of exemption, within five days of adoption by the Board of Supervisors. I would like to add to that, that they add clarity on what is good standings. I would like to add, in those good standings, that grandfathering be clarified, that it is an active Water Board license before the date specified in the opt-out ordinances as they stand, as well as been, being actively seeking a license from the state and county. That's my motion.
I will second that, and if you will, um, accept a modification to allow, um, cultivation before the word footprint under modification.
Could you tell me what page you're looking at, Commissioner?
That's basically...
The reason I ask is, in the resolution, I showed that we do have cultivation in front of the word footprint.
But not under the modification.
What page?
Uh, okay, I see it now, thank you.
I'll accept that.
Um, and also that non-retail storefront and micro-business be allowed in opt-out areas.
I'll also accept that. So...
Chair, just to clarify, this is Margaret Law, County Council. We had a motion on the floor by, I believe, Supervisor McIntosh, and don't believe it had a second. I did not hear you rule that motion died for a lack of a second, so we would need that to be declared, to determine if there was a second.
I rescinded, oh, wait a minute, sorry. No, no, I did not, I'm sorry.
Okay, so, is, so let's back up. So Commissioner McIntosh put a, a motion on the table to move this to a further date and have this document rewritten. Did he have a second on that motion?
Not exactly rewritten. Could I...
Go ahead, go ahead.
I, I, I move to continue this discussion to a future date while giving recommendations to staff on how we can refine this, this document, we can refine this document to reflect, um, actual, factual findings, and just clean, clean the document up.
Okay, is there a second on that?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay. Okay, is there a discussion on that?
Uh, just to clarify, I think it is against the Brown Act for yours to have multiple items on an agenda, adjusted at once. I think it's a Brown Act violation, if I'm not mistaken.
For what?
Because you have too many things going on at once on the agenda, you have to have, you know, you can only have a limit, if I'm not mistaken.
You have a motion and subsequent...
You know, on bills, he had a bunch of criteria added into his...
Well, I'd have to begin to rush it. Yeah, I'd have to...
I'd speak it all.
Okay, so, so the discussion?
For discussion, um, you know, I'm, you know, I'm all for perfect, if we can ever get there, but I don't think we will. I think that no matter what comes back, nobody's going to be completely satisfied. There's all, obviously, biases on this board to what we're doing and not doing. And I think for that, I mean, at some point, we have to come and find some middle ground and be okay with something that, that can work, that can get us moving forward, that honors these opt-out zones, that ensures that these opt-out zones are, you know, secured before they... they sunset. I think there's been a lot of hard work put into this. The county spent a lot of money on consultants to get this. I think she's open to amending the document and getting clarifications. I don't think it needs to come back to us. I think those things can happen, be put in front of the board, and let the board rule. Ultimately, we're here just to give advice for the board's discretion, and I think the document, although it's not perfect, it's workable. And I think with enough advice to Ms. Chudin, that it can be something that everybody will be okay with. Nobody's going to be ultimately happy with everything that's going to happen here. That's very obvious. I think pushing the can down the road further is just what we all have been doing. I honestly, for one, want to get to planning. I want to get to the general plan. I want to get to stuff beyond cannabis. And that is no, nothing against cannabis at all. I just want to move on. I think the community wants to move on. That's what I think about that motion.
What do you think about the cannabis ordinance? Do you think that if we would have put time and energy into that ordinance at the beginning, it might have been better?
I think if we had a general plan, it would have been a lot better, yes.
No, that's not my question. I'm saying if we would have actually not rushed it through and put the time and care into it that it needed, that many of these problems would not be here to begin with?
I think the lack of a general plan didn't not allow that to happen.
Okay. So there's a lot of serious issues with this, and this does not, this does not protect Jeff, Gaddila, and Xenia. This does not protect the potential opt-outs in the future. And I'm really uncomfortable with accepting a document that has so much, it's permanently establishing, what, five opt-out zones and laying the framework for future opt-out zones. There is, I want the ability to have an opt-out zone, but I think this is important enough, especially because presently, it affects 50% of the parcels in Trinity County, and gives the opportunity to expand to more than half of the county. This is not a document just to push through. This is something that needs the care and the time. I think the sunsetting of the urgency ordinance is not till July, so we might have another meeting or two, at least, to get this right, because this affects everybody.
So what happens when it can?
Well, I just find it ironic that earlier today, we were saying, you know, we want staff to move on to subdivision review and all their other backlog of tasks, and now we have this professional document, I thought was very well-written by Ms. Chudin, and we're saying, staff, go back and tweak it, you know. I would like to move forward, let the staff start working on all the things on the backlog. And, you know, the things that were in this document were hashed out in the public workshops where we sat here for hours and hours. So I would like to move forward.
I just don't know how, you know, areas experiencing illegal dumping from unauthorized water sources, how that was, if it was thoroughly vetted, how was that put in a document? Right? I mean, there's just a lot of, there's a lot of information in this document that is just straight false, or it's not just false, but it misrepresents a reason for establishing an ordinance. This needs to be right.
I think the professionals that wrote it would probably highly disagree with that. And they are the professionals that we hired as county. And so are we going to lean on your opinion or the professionals we hired?
We are appointed from our elected officials to have our inputs on land use policies. It is our job.
And we have, that's what we did two nights here, and that's what we did community meetings for.
Not for the permanent ordinance. That was recommendation. I can vote tonight to ratify our recommendations from those last meetings. Those recommendations are the recommendations. We voted upon them, that's fine. That's what I was under the assumption that we are coming here to do tonight, but this is not what we're doing. What tonight is, is establishing a permanent ordinance for future overlays, and that has issues.
That was our original charge from the supervisors, let us to develop an ordinance that would be in place, you know, to incorporate the urgency ordinance.
Yes, that's correct, but when, at that point, we did not have the information. I didn't have the information until Monday for the 60-page document of all the findings and the rationale for these opt-outs zones. And it, honestly, I was, to lightly say it, I was, I am very concerned with the findings to rationalize cutting out half of the properties in our county, half of the county properties.
Which you're not going to change if you don't adopt this. You're still going to have all those original opt-out areas. You may not have Rush Creek and Loweston Expansion, the two small ones. You're going to have all those original opt-out areas. So what are you going to change if you, in terms of opt-out areas, if you delay?
Oh, I am not looking to delay. The urgency, we have until July for one particular place. We have a year for another opt-out zone. So this is not delaying. This is.
No, this is about you getting everything you want, Duncan, and at some point, you've got to compromise.
I would like to not make this personal. I would like to keep this to land use. I would like to keep this to zoning, right? And use the general plan as the template, right? We want to get this right.
I believe they did. I believe the staff would say they did. I believe that that consultant would say they did. I believe that at least two of us think they did.
Well, then, I guess, let's just bring it to a vote and then move on.
Let's do it. So I'd like to make, can you?
There's already two motions on the table.
Can we vote on the first motion?
It's the, the second motion goes first.
So the second motion.
The subsequent motion. Yes. Commissioner Fall, how do you vote?
Aye. Commissioner Sharp, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner McIntosh, how do you vote?
No.
Commissioner Heaton, how do you vote?
Clarification for just a second. The subsequent one was the one that.
The subsequent motion is the recommendation of the staff with the addition of added clarity for good standing for grandfathered, active and actively seeking licenses, and also to allow storefront retail in opt-out areas.
Correct.
And cultivation, micro under modification, the footprint, sorry, the cultivation footprint.
Actually, I.
Commissioner Barrett, how do you vote?
No.
I have three for the subsequent motion and two against.
Motion passed.
Can I get one clarification, please?
Yes.
I believe that the motion included both non-retail and micro business in opt-outs?
Yes.
Was what the notes show?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, at this time, we're going to move on to planning commissioner reports. Is there any reports from the planning commission?
Yeah, I have something I want to say. So first of all, I just wanted to make it clear that I'm not against retail cannabis, despite a lot of feedback I've gotten. I wanted to know because I was concerned that it wasn't requiring a conditional use permit. So it's really ironic tonight, again, that we're, this emphasis on findings of fact, that our decisions should be based on findings of fact. I've always agreed with that. I don't think we should be, you know, we should leave the politicking and the staffing issues up to the board of supervisors to resolve. So if you read the zoning ordinance, C1 is supposed to be compatible with residential. That's why a bar needs a conditional use permit. And highway commercial, it's supposed to be retail associated with a service provided to the traveling public. It specifies traveling public. So retail cannabis doesn't really fit those, but I was willing to stretch that in response to the public comments, as long as the public had a chance to weigh in a little bit with the conditional use permit. So instead, you know, the commission, you know, because we have heart, you know, we understand the issues with conditional use permits, we voted to spend the, to send the ordinance to the board of supervisors, because we want that grant funding. I understand that, because, you know, we're concerned about past applicants dealing with staffing issues and delays in conditional use permits. But anyway, that's why I wanted that. I wanted to make sure that the public had the chance to weigh in through a conditional use permit. So I apologize. I know I'm sounding like a sore loser, because I know you guys, all your hearts are in the right place. I just hope in the future that we do what Duncan was emphasizing tonight, that we make decisions based on findings of fact, not emotion. Thanks. That's my rant.
Is there any other commissioner reports? Planning director's report?
Just a couple of brief comments, that I think it is important to note that I hear a lot of talk about, let's streamline the process, you know, let's streamline the process so we can get things done. But every time the commission entertains doing something by a director's use permit or a conditional use permit, or we need to take more time to do these things, you know, we need more review time, all of those things make it harder and make it take longer to get things done. The planning department literally is four people. One of those persons works on SMARA and floodplain development and with TRPP, or TP, Trinity River Restoration Project. So he doesn't even work on any of those things. One of those persons is Debbie, and all of her job is to make sure phone calls get answered, and emails get answered, and PRAs get resolved, and she spends a significant amount of time putting together planning meetings and, you know, addressing all of these other issues. She does all of the mailouts. That takes time. So we have two planners. That's myself, who is doing three jobs right now, and Ms. Skylar Fisher, who is trying desperately to get caught up on all the director's use permits for all of the folks that are hoping to have a RV on their property when they do finally get their license. So it's not like we're doing nothing, and I would really appreciate it if there would be some consideration for the staff that is working diligently to get these done while we're sitting here also listening to planning commission members talk about how let's make the process more complicated. So, you know, it would be super, and I'd also like to add in, if we're doing all these things, we're not working on the general plan because that's our charge as well.
Agreed.
So just a note to keep in mind, when there's consistent complaints about what we can't get done, how about let's focus on how we're going to make it easier so we can get it done? Any suggestions that you would like to pass on to the board would be very much appreciated.
I certainly noted what you said earlier, as far as, you know, getting a group together to get things through is probably the best way forward to make your life easier. I will, you have my word, I will be talking to Jill tomorrow and seeing what we can do to help you in any way we can, because certainly, I can't imagine what kind of a lift that you guys have with four people. I know what we have to do as a company, and I have four people in my office, and so I can't imagine you guys getting done what you have to do. It's probably, it's impossible, I'm sure. So I appreciate what you're saying and respect that.
It is a complicated task, and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
May I ask you something?
I did not know that there is only four of y'all. That's, I just didn't know. In fact, a couple of times I've gone to the, when I come into town, it's like, it's always in the afternoon or whatever, and the doors are always locked, so I'm not able to go in there. But I ask you to forgive me for being hard on y'all, because it's like, honestly, with not knowing, I didn't know, and I'm sorry. It is like, because we need to extend grace to people, and it's like, and I, you know what? I appreciate all that y'all do. It's like, but I'll tell you this, I didn't realize how screwed up the county was, but I also can say, when knowing that there's only four of y'all working, well, it's like that, I'm sorry, that it was like, that I voiced an opinion towards, like, not giving y'all the benefit of the doubt, so I'm sorry.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I think what's really important is for everybody to take a look at things that maybe aren't so important that the public needs to weigh in on. I think that would make a big difference. Every time that we take a look at any type of project that we need to bring to the planning commission, or that will eventually go on to the board as well, you know, that, it's a huge process, you know? It's a lot of moving parts. One of the things that I have asked Supervisor Fraser to look at is cutting out the need for a director's use permit for an RV on your property. Little things like that, that don't have a huge impact to the project as a whole, you know? If we can tease out those types of things, and that streamlines the process. So I would invite everyone here that is listening to think about it, you know? Think about those types of things that you would like to see, that you feel maybe don't, you know, make a huge difference to the process, that we can eliminate that, you know? We can eliminate that step, or, you know, if there's ways that you feel that you could help us with, you know, getting our process done as far as reviewing projects. Bringing in complete applications is a really helpful type of thing. Being fairly certain about the type of project that you want to do with a good, robust project description, super helpful. That makes the process go very faster. So, you know, just those types of things would be very much appreciated. We're always willing to be as helpful as we can, but the reality is, is what we're doing, a lot of it is based on state code and our level ordinances, so, you know, there are parts of the process that we just have to do. So if there's things that we can cut, that we don't have to go through that process, it would be really great. And our upcoming general plan is a really good way to tease out some of those items. So at that, I will just, Commissioner Fall had asked me for a calendar, and I'm still waiting. Last I was speaking with Ms. Chudin, she's going to be working on a couple of more ordinances. So I don't have a complete calendar at this moment, but I do want to make you aware that we did put a legal notice in the paper for ordinance that will be coming before you on the 28th, and that is for limited density residential dwellings, which is a little bit different than cannabis, but also going to be an interesting discussion for the commission.
Schedule K housing?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Would you mind, if I ask, what is an appropriately staffed department? I mean, like, how many people are you understaffed? How many, how many people are lacking?
We need a director, and we need at least one more planner, and we need probably several more, or at least one more, possibly two, admin staff that can appropriately take care of our front counter and responding appropriately to the public. We also need an accountant, which is something we have not. Um, we also need an accountant, which is something we have not had in about five months. So we're splitting those duties as well with Department of Transportation.
And are all?
And, and that's just planning. Cannabis is, is.
Are all fi- are all five of those positions being actively sought after?
Um, for accounting, yes. Um, I would assume that the director position is currently being sought after, but I, I can't report to that because that's not something that I have the authority to, you know, have any authority over that. Um, we're also working on recruiting for the cannabis division as well. Uh, several positions there. Uh, the accounting position is kind of a crossover for both. Um, we're looking for a, uh, environmental compliance specialist. Uh, we have an active recruitment for that and, uh, persons that we would really like to, um, interview. So, um, we'll probably start on, uh, for admin coordinator. And then we're looking at some more, um, creative ways to recruit.
So that's, that's at least four or five vacant positions?
Yes.
Staff level should be somewhere around seven to nine.
Yes.
In each division, that's planning and cannabis.
We're at four in each division.
So basically, um, our division director just pointed out to me that we're short by twelve positions currently.
That are, that are vacant?
Yeah.
Wow.
So is the dollars there for those vacancies?
I couldn't answer that question directly. Basically, what we've got on our org chart are positions that are allocated. Um, you know, it's my understanding that being allocated and being funded is sometimes two different things. So I wouldn't be able to speak to that without looking at the budget.
Understood. Thank you. Thank you for that report, Lisa.
You're welcome. Thank you.
With that, um, I'm going to move that we adjourn. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.